Well, two o'clock on my computer here, so let's go ahead and call to order this meeting. Madam Clerk with the roll call.
Mayor Lawson.
Here.
House members Abbott.
Here.
Hello.
Here.
Anderson.
Here.
Maybe.
Here.
There.
Here.
I think City Attorney Duncan.
Uh, here, thanks.
City Manager Crutz.
Here.
We have a quorum, thank you.
Okay. And then do we have a flag and would since we got Wes on there today, I'm going to make him come back up and do the pledge for us, please.
Hathaway. Lead everybody in the pledge today. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
You? Okay, now we're on item four, public comment. Madam Clerk.
Mr. Mayor, I'm going to go ahead and read our opening announcement. Is okay with you?
Yes, please.
Good afternoon, and thank you for joining us. Due to the social distancing requirements enacted in response to the COVID-19 pandemic, the Sparks City Council meetings will be hosted in this virtual setting until further notice. The safety of Sparks residents, employees, and elected officials are important to us, and we appreciate your patience as we journey through this virtual meeting together. The City of Sparks uses Zoom, a third-party app for its virtual meetings, and does not control its technical specifications or requirements. Your ability to participate in public comment during this meeting may be impacted by factors like the type of device you use, the strength of your internet or cellular signal, and the company that provides your internet or cellular service. The City of Sparks is not responsible if you are not able to participate in a meeting through Zoom due to these or any other factors. For those of you watching and listening from home, general public comment will be announced for items four and 12.1. If you wish to speak during general public comment, you will need to call in using the phone number or join via the meeting link provided on the city council agenda. Public comment will not be permitted on social media outlets. Public comment will also be open for public hearing, item 10.1. All participants will be muted upon entry to the meeting. If you would like to speak during public comment items, please press star nine from your telephone or raise your hand on your computer or tablet when you're prompted to do so. You will be called upon to speak one at a time by your name or your telephone number. No video callers will be admitted to the meeting. When you are called in to speak for public comment, state your name for the record and begin speaking. The timer will begin when you say your name and you will have three minutes. Please remember, any comments or questions cannot be addressed or answered by the council if the topics have not been agendized. Any person who disrupts the meeting to the extent that it is disorderly conduct will be removed from the meeting. Thank you again for joining us, and if you would like to make public comment at this time, please press star nine from your telephone or choose the raise your hand option on your Zoom. And I'm shutting down, Mr. Mayor.
Okay, thank you. Move on to item five, approval of the agenda. Looking for any additions, corrections? Or approval?
Any to approve?
Yeah. Motion by there, a second by Abbott. Any further discussion? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Let's carry unanimously. All right, item six, the minutes. Uh, consideration of possible approval of the minutes of the special Sparks City Council meeting for November 16th and the regular Sparks City Council meeting on November 23rd. Any additions, corrections, or additions, uh, deletions? If none, that's I'm moving, looking for a motion.
Move to approve.
I got a motion by Councilman Anderson, a segment by Councilwoman Bybee. Any further discussion? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
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 Opposed? Let's carry unanimously. Thank you. All right, moving on. Item seven, announcements, presentations, recognition items, and items of special interest. Seven point one, two, three. All for Mr. Crutz.
Good afternoon, Mayor Lawson and members of the city council. For the record, Neil Crutz, your city manager, uh, here to present announcements for a total of seven vacancies across three different committees inside our city. The first four are on our citizen advisory committee, the Sparks Citizens Advisory Committee. We have one vacancy for the Ward One Board Member, and then three vacancies for alternates in Wards One, Three, and Five. Application or the, the time period they are on the commission is co-terminus with the appointing elected official, which in, in this case is going to be just short of four years. Applications for any of those four openings will be taken through 5:00 PM on Tuesday, December 22nd of 2020. Moving on to seven point two, in our senior citizens advise, yeah, citizens advisory committee, we have two vacancies there. Alternate positions in both wards three and four. Again, uh, those, those positions run co-terminus with their elected official. And while we're looking for residents there, just like we are in, uh, on the regular citizens advisory committee, we prefer people on our senior citizens advisory committee to be 55 or older, though that is not a requirement. Similarly, we will accept applications for those two openings, uh, through 5:00 PM on December 22nd, 2020. And then finally, item seven point three for the Truckee River Advisory Committee, I'm sorry, the Truckee River Fund Advisory Committee. We have a single vacancy there. And that application, uh, is accepted through 5:00 PM on Friday, January 15th of 2021. That position has, doesn't require citizenship within the city. Uh, it's, it's open to the mayor and council, and the term on that advisory committee is, uh, is at the discretion of the mayor and council. So again, applications there will be accepted through, uh, Friday, January 15th, 2021 at 5:00 PM. To apply for any of these seven vacancies, please visit the city's website at www.cityofsparks.us/getinvolved. Once you're there, click on volunteering for a Sparks Board, Commission, or Committee. Fill out the form and press submit. Thank you, Mayor Lawson.
Thank you. All right, moving on to item seven point four. Update on the University of Nevada Reno Research Program regarding the presence of the COVID-19 virus and wastewater and community prevalence monitoring. And who is going to present this? Let me just look real quick. Doctor. Now, I'm in a fight. I apologize, this, it's Paglia.
Pagila.
Pagila. Thank you. Go ahead, sir.
Good afternoon. Uh, for the record, my name is Krishna Pagila. I'm a professor at the University of Nevada Reno, and also director of the Nevada Water Innovation Institute, which was founded by your agency, your city as well as with five other partner, community partners. So I'm going to share, uh, my screen, Mayor Lawson, if I may.
Please.
I hope you can see my screen now.
We're seeing presentation mode of.
Yes. The cover slide, can you see that?
We are, we are seeing the, uh, the, the speaker version. Um, so we're seeing the present, the cover slide, and we're seeing the next slide as well.
Okay. And.
I think if you go up to display settings, there's going to be a button up there that, uh, to swap, there you go. That should do it.
Okay, thank you. Yeah. Good afternoon again. What I will present this afternoon for the next 10 minutes or so is, uh, the progress on the project that we're doing, uh, with funding support from the City of Sparks. An investigation of, of SARS-CoV-2, it's the virus that causes the COVID-19 disease. And it's a very unique way to do this, uh, in where we monitor wastewater to see the prevalence of the disease in the community. So, um, let me go ahead and get started. Uh, this is what I will do in the next 10 minutes. That is, uh, I want to acknowledge certain people, including those of you on the city council for your leadership, uh, in supporting us at the University of Nevada Reno, as well as Nevada Water Innovation Institute at UNR. And I'll briefly go over the project itself, uh, giving you an idea of what we are doing and what was done in the past, uh, three plus months or so, and then some findings to date and where we are going from here onwards. First and foremost, I want to, um, thank all the city council members, not only for this particular project, but we've been doing lots of different things. At Tom Wharf, as well as in the Nevada Water Innovation Institute, as I mentioned, you are one of the, uh, six founders, uh, of the Nevada Water Innovation Institute, which has been able to do a lot of things for the community and be prepared to take up any research projects or projects that are of, of value to the city and the county and, and the community around us. Um, of course, Mayor Lawson, thank you for giving this opportunity. And I really particularly want to, uh, recognize, uh, late Mayor Ron Smith, who was instrumental in, in us doing many, many things. I think, uh, he's been, he has been, he was amazing, and I, I had a chance to see him at the, the SIR Award early this year. Uh, it was wonderful to see him. And, uh, we do miss him definitely. And of course, uh, the city officials, Neil Crutz, the city manager, who I met the first time, I even thought of joining UNR back in summer of 2015, and, uh, I mentioned to him that I'm here to do things that are useful for the community and I need your support, and and here we are, uh, five years later, Neil, uh, we're doing wonderful things. And of course, Mr. Martini, uh, Kevin Porter, uh, Michael Drinkwater, all, all of your staff, as well as Ron Korman particularly, who's been a tremendous help in the last month, month and a half, helping UNR students and, and researchers in sampling the sewer system all around in City of Sparks. And of course, uh, I wouldn't be here without my research team at UNR, which includes dozens of students and several faculty members. Two of them, um, uh, doctors, Laura Hawk, uh, shown in the middle picture left and Lynn Lee, who are really spearheading the work that I'm going to present, who are on this call, uh, on this webinar, listening in. So, but also what you see here are pictures of, of different things, uh, different places and different people. Students on the top left, and, uh, on the bottom right, you will see two photos of, of City of Sparks staff helping, uh, UNR students, uh, collect samples from the sewer system. Way on the bottom left, you will see a shot of, of, uh, City of Reno Street, where we had to use, uh, Silver State barricade to do traffic control. And way on the top right, you can see a couple of the students, Neela Farin Vlaga, collecting samples, uh, from the sewers. They've been doing it every day, uh, including Thanksgiving Day and the day after Thanksgiving Day for the past month or so. Uh, and we will continue to do this until December 18th. So I just want to recognize those people as well. So what we are really doing is that we are monitoring wastewater, uh, which popularly known as sewage, where it contains whatever we discharge into the sewers. Uh, and in this case, we are monitoring the sewage for markers on the virus, which are, which can be identified by which we can determine what is the concentration of the virus that was discharged to the sewers. So we're doing this at three water reclamation facilities. Of course, the main one is Tom Wharf. And of, we are also monitoring Reno Sted, which is operated on owned by city and as well as Tom Wharf, because they have some connections to the overall county population. And the health data that comes from Washoe County Health District includes those two areas as well. But I'll focus mostly on Tom Wharf. And then we are also, uh, sampling at 12 sites across the Tom Wharf Sewer Shed. Um, six in City of Sparks and six in Reno, uh, which serve, uh, which is, which are served by Tom Wharf. We bring those samples to the lab and do this technique called PCR technique, which is the same technique that you, uh, uh, your sample, when you go for COVID testing is, is, is done, uh, by this QPCR molecular biology method. I'm not showing the whole procedure, but it's basically bringing the wastewater samples to the lab, concentrating the virus, uh, or viral fragments, and measuring them using this, uh, PCR method. So it's very accurate and very, very, um, precise. Uh, what you see here is the, the labs themselves, we're only showing a small part of it. We're working in three different labs. And this is one of the labs on the top, and the bottom lab is another lab, uh, where some equipment is placed. We have been able to acquire a lot of equipment through this project to build up the capacity. And you see the students working in the lab on the top. So the point I want to make on this slide is that, uh, your support to do this work has enabled us to build capacity that is not only being used for the current need, which is this COVID-19 monitoring, but also which gives us the capacity to do future work on water research that and development and technology development that is needed for the region. So we have built capacity that we can use in the future as well. And I hope very soon we will be able to bring you on campus and have you tour through these labs and see what has been established. You know, in, in, in the new year. So there are three components to it. Um, one is the Tom Wharf monitoring, which I want to show you the results here. Uh, what you see here is that we get samples and analyze them. In this graph, you can see on the, on the Y-axis, the vertical axis is the, the virus concentration on the X-axis are the dates. For the clarity's sake, we are showing specifically the period between October first week to until last week. And what you can see is that the, the, there are two markers that we measure for. If those two markers are present, either, either one of them is present, that means we have, uh, viral discharges into that wastewater. So this indicated by blue and red. As you can see from October, which is very obvious, and of course, we know from Washoe County Health Data, the concentrations are increasing. So they are increasing, uh, you can see from the left, the smaller bars are somewhere around 200,000 gene copies per liter. They've gone up to, uh, during the last week of November to three times that, 600,000. Obviously, we know our cases have gone up a lot. So it, this is very indicative of what is happening in the community. One of the advantages of using wastewater as a, a monitoring tool is that it includes even people who do not get tested, and also people who are asymptomatic. It's individuals that do not have any symptoms, even though they have infection, they discharge the virus, just like the, you know, the individuals who have symptoms. So maybe at, at lower levels, but definitely they do. Okay, so this data is useful for us to really understand the community prevalence. And in the future, after we get Washoe County Health District data, we can basically create a model that tells us what is happening in the next week, next two weeks type of stuff. So it's somewhat predictive. But we are too early in the, in the study period for us to be able to do that, but we're working on the data to show that. This is a very, very busy graph. I don't expect you to understand every part of it, and I don't intend to explain every part of it. But what I want to show you is on the right side is the GIS map of the Tom Wharf Sewer Shed. Uh, as you know, the area, the top, uh, part is City of Sparks, top right is City of Sparks. And then the bottom part is basically Reno, bottom and the left part is Reno. So we chose 12 sites within the sewer system in, 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 and the two. And, and the way it is divided is that Tom Wharf receives two, two interceptors or two channels. We have six on each. And on the sparking interceptor, we have four sites from Sparks, as well as two sites from the Washoe County part of the property on the top. And then in the bottom, we have six sites, five come from Reno, uh, sewer system, and one from Washoe County, which feeds to Tom Wharf. And I won't go over the data, but what we are trying to do is we are trying to really go into the sub-areas of the city and the county to see how each of those areas are contributing. So without going into the data, when you see these dots up and down on the top graph is Sparks, the bottom one is Reno, what it shows you is there is a geographical variability across the region. And by really looking at how many people, so these, each dot on, on these plots on the top or at the bottom represents an area of about 1,000 homes. So we picked a sewer that is serving about 750,000 homes. We monitor it every day and we bring the samples and analyze them. So if we can get the Washoe County Health District data for those 1,000 homes, how many active cases are, we can really compare the two and use that to identify hotspots. So we want to be predictive, we want to know where the hotspots are, so that way we can do something about it in the future. So this is the second part of the, uh, of the study. And the third part is what is happening to the viral fragments as they go through the Truckee Meadows Water Reclamation Facility? You may get questions from public saying that, is the water that is coming out of the treatment facility safe? Is my river clean? So you, what you see here in this figure is that on the left side is the, left side axis is the number of viral copies. On the bottom are the dates, uh, or, or, or sample locations. So if you go from left to right, the first two boxes that you see represent the concentration of the virus coming into the water reclamation facility. And after primary treatment, which is the first step in the plant, the second two boxes, and then when you go to the third box, which the third area, which is the bluer teal type of colored area, which is under secondary effluent, you can see the viral concentration basically go to, uh, to below detectable limits are extremely low, very close to the detection limit. And this is only a third stage of the treatment facility. We still have advanced treatment. After that, we have disinfection. So we don't see it after the third step, and, and we definitely don't see it after the fourth and the fifth steps. So the point I want to make is that as we are treating wastewater in Tom Wharf, we, if any signs of this virus or viral fragments in the wastewater are completely removed in the treatment plant, and the effluent produced is safe to go into the river or reused. So that's the third part of it, and we are continuing to monitor this, and we're going to do this even in the future. So that's, those are the three tasks that I wanted to show to you. And then where are we going from here? We are collecting data from Washoe County Health District, the GIS-based data, and then we are going to complement that with wastewater testing data and human testing data, and we will create a predictive model that can tell us that, you know, how can wastewater monitoring help us to tell what is the level of disease in the community, even if we don't have the testing capability and if people are not getting tested? And then we'll continue to monitor the plant itself, uh, even though our project is ending December 30th because of the CARES Act one. We will continue to monitor that. We have the capacity, uh, already built in. We have the students, so we are going to use a certain amount of other resources uh, from the Water Innovation Institute and continue to monitor them. But for this project, we will end the project on December 30th for project purposes, and we will produce a report to the city. And of course, we want, don't want this work to end. We've already applied to the National Science Foundation, the National Institutes of Health, for additional funding to continue this work into the next year. And that's still pending. So with that, I'm going to stop here. Mayor Lawson, and I will be happy to take any questions from the city council members or anybody else on the call.
Questions from the council?
Yes.
I do.
I, I can't see you, so are you?
Okay. Uh, Councilwoman Bybee. Uh, I do, uh, thank you, Mayor. Doctor, really good to see you. And, uh, the question I have, you said it's, um, predictive, so that, uh, it is giving us an idea. Uh, and I, I, I think that's so important of people who are asymptomatic or people who haven't been tested. But my, I was curious if, if, when it shows up in the water, uh, would it be, give you a better idea before people actually get sick or spread it further? Or it just indicates it's already there, and it gives the community and the medical community the ability to truly gauge hotspots and how much care we could need or fall out from it? Does it, is it, is it tell you before people are sick and contagious?
So the, the way this is, uh, some of the cities that have started this work, uh, Councilmember Bybee, is that, that they have been able to do this monitoring every single day and correlate the human health data with the wastewater data. From that, they basically project it out and say that, okay, um, we measured this many viral copies in the wastewater today, and that is equivalent to so many cases. So by having a historical data, they are able to tell about a week to 10 days in advance if the cases based on human testing are increasing or not. Now, how does a community use that information? By knowing seven or eight days? It's purely from a management point of view, is that we are seeing increased concentration, so we should be ready for whether, you know, distributing personal protective equipment or making hospital capacity available. Um, and with respect to hot, hotspots, for example, in some universities, they have done is that they've been testing the wastewater from a dormitory. And even though none of the students had any symptom, all of a sudden, they start seeing increased concentration. They immediately implement human testing of all the dormitory, um, occupants, and thereby isolate the ones who are infected. So, uh, it could be used in two different ways.
Okay, and, yeah, and, and I appreciate that, and, and obviously, it would also, uh, help us make decisions, or the governor, uh, or our health departments make decisions if they see a huge spike, but it also conversely will also show if the actions we're taking is making a difference because it's showing up in, in the sewer, you know, so it's showing up in this, uh, in the water. But, but people aren't getting tested or aren't sick, but the numbers go down, and we're not, we're not aware of that, but we could see either way, whether it spikes or whether it goes down, and we give you a tour measure, and then how we respond as a community and as, uh, the Health District and the Governor.
That is kind of.
Okay, perfect. Thank you so much.
Councilman there.
Yes, uh, thank you, Doctor. I appreciate you being here. This is kind of incredible to me, just watching how science can unfold. Couple of quick questions. I noticed on there the last three days, it looked like it dropped on your graph. Does that mean that we can assume that we are seeing the, uh, drop, and we are going to watch that happen? Is it too early to say that that actually could be true?
Yeah, it, it is true, uh, Councilmember Daher. It's, it's when we see the decreasing concentrations, uh, in the following few days, we expect the active cases to go down. If you, if you see that in your package, I'm sure that's, that, that graph is there. You see that the first couple of days in December and the last day in November, the concentrations are going down. And if you look at the Washoe County Health Data a week later or 10 days later, you see the, uh, number of active cases have moderated a bit and is slowly coming down. So our, if you, if you look at the Washoe County website, the, the peak, uh, daily active cases were around Thanksgiving, but those were infections before Thanksgiving. So when we see the numbers in the wastewater, they are more or less real time because we are collecting a wastewater sample from a sewer manhole on the day somebody is flushing. So it's almost real time, and they may not even have any symptoms. They may not have even gone to testing. So you start seeing the concentration. Of course, they will start shedding more and more as the disease progresses and then goes down. But i- it is true that, you know, we will, we will, we have seen that moderation happen already. So today's data, then it would tell us what might happen in the next 10 days type of stuff. Unfortunately, the results take a couple of days to get back, you know.
With that graph that I saw also, are we able to pull that in and look within Sparks and say, you know, all this is happening, but Sparks were, we're not seeing those levels, so we could, you know, I mean, it seems like it's a few days behind sometimes of what I just saw there. So is, are we gonna get to a place where we can potentially use it to help us make decisions?
Yes, we need to really take that, uh, Washoe County Health District data at homeowners level and compare that in the historical. That way, it gives us a model that can be used to predict what happens in the future. But that's what we wanted to work towards, and we are working towards. You know, it's, uh, I wish, uh, we don't need to use this work as, as, just like any other insurance. It's an insurance for us to be prepared, but we don't have to use it. It's a wonderful thing.
Hey, my only final question is, with the vaccines coming, how will that affect your testing? Would just show that this markers aren't there, or will we be able to see that as well? Was that something you're marking?
Yes, I, I don't think we will be able to measure these markers.
Okay.
Yeah, and because the, e- even if, if a certain number of people, because the concentrations are going to go lower and lower, and they won't be, you know, they won't be detectable in the wastewater, so.
That's wonderful. Thank you so much.
Yeah, thank you.
Anyone else? Mr. Anderson?
Yes, sir. Uh, and thank you very much, Doctor. Appreciate you taking time to, uh, walk us through this. So I, I did have a question as far as the accuracy, and if I understood correctly, you have not received any data from Washoe County. data from Washoe County Health yet to be able to basically overlap what you're showing on your graphs matching up with them.
So right now we have publicly information, information, Councilmember Anderson. That is what Washoe County is reporting. But we also got a data dump, but which is which is from a period which is a month older than now. And a lot of that data is 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 not GIS ready means we really can't put that into the GIS files based on address level. That way we can break it down to 1,000 home or the Sparks interceptor of Tamwar or, you know, interceptor of Tamwar. So we couldn't break it down. Therefore, we are not there yet. And and we are working with Washoe County Health District now. Also, for us to get home level data, we need to get what is called institutional review board because it's private information. Go through certain paperwork. We finished that. Now we are able to receive that information. Once we have that, we will be able to, you know, compare the wastewater data to human health data down to a smaller region than what we
And will it be at that point when we understand the accuracy of of the testing or are you already able to see a direct correlation?
We see a correlation, but the correlation is not good or or it's not really something that we want to count on because we are looking at the whole Washoe County wide reported cases. When we get this data, we will be able to take this 1,000 population, 1,000 home region and say, okay, here we have the number of cases, here were the concentrations for this region. We can, in the future, if we take a wastewater sample and measure a certain concentration, we can say there are 1,000 people infected in this area or 200 people infected in this area. That's what we are working towards.
Perfect. Thank you.
Good. Any other question, Mr. Abbott?
Yeah, hey, doctor, on the on the map, the purple dots are where you're testing at, right?
Yes, the the 12 dots on the on the map, yes.
And so once we kind of get this figured out, like, I was just thinking, there's a dot looks like it's on McCarran that I know like Sun Valley feeds into it. So we could, you know, we could, I guess, test upstream and identify as it coming. If there was, if there was an uptick, it could be not just in Sparks. We could have an uptick in another. I guess invalid, we could. I guess we could pick and choose and see, you know, is it coming from our businesses? You know, where people aren't just living in Sparks, they're working in Sparks. And I guess we're able to later on, pick and choose our dots and find out exactly where they're contributing to, I guess.
Absolutely. We can pick and choose dots if we want to monitor a particular area. In this case, we picked the 12 dots or we wanted to get the whole area to be geographically represented. And and so we took like, you know, the most important reason is that one sewer is serving those homes. We can just cover that area. And when we get the health data from Washoe County Health District, we can compare it. That's why we picked those 12 dots to cover the entire area. And then six dots come from the Sparks interceptor and six, and then we can compare it. What happens is that the virus from the home to coming to the reclamation facility who is degrades along the way. So we want to know what is happening at the population right where the origin is. And then eventually, if we get to the point where we do this work long enough, we may be able to take one sample at Tamwar and say that what is happening in the Sparks interceptor area.
That makes sense. And then one more, I guess, looking forward at other illnesses and diseases, we'll be ready to go if we do. We're able to find this up for something else, right?
That's correct. Let's hope we don't have to use that for some other disease. But that's where it comes from. It comes from places in the world where certain, you know, infectious diseases have been monitored by this wastewater-based epidemiology. We knew about the field, but we never had to use it in the United States. This is the first time. So since summer, it's been used in many, many cities around the country.
Thank you, doctor.
Any other questions from the council? Okay, just one for me then, doctor, is is so we can use this for cold and flu season next year. So we would know when our flu is peaking and whatnot to have more shots on hand or whatever, right?
In principle, yes, Mayor Lawson. Not only that, you can use this to figure out if somebody is using a lot more salt versus a lot more sugar too, if you want to monitor things like. So it's a it's a way for you to monitor the sewer system without bothering the public and and know something about what is happening in the community.
I find this whole thing very fascinating. Thank you guys for your work there at UNR. It's just fascinating effect to me that we can affect public health by monitoring wastewater.
Thank you, Mayor Lawson.
Okay, we have no other questions? I'm going to thank you, doctor, for your presentation and we'll see you soon.
I have a question. When do we get to go on the tour?
Well, council member, if it's one at a time, we can take you on the tour anytime, but we would like to invite all of you at the same time. And hopefully it'll be sometime, you know, before summer. That'd be wonderful.
All right.
Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Okay, let's move on to item 7.5. The quantification of greenhouse gas emissions from the increased travel to the Tahoe Reno Industrial Center. And I see we have David McGrath from DRI with us. David, take it away.
Great, thanks. Give me a second to try to share my screen here. Let's let's see if that works. Is that is that okay, anyone?
Yes, sir. That is
Okay. Okay, um, thank you for for your time. I appreciate it. And I also appreciate the opportunity to to work on this study. I was a little late to the to the party for this study, but Brooke Stathes, my colleague at DRI, who has since moved on, and I have enjoyed working on this on this project. The the purpose of this project was to kind of get a handle on greenhouse gases in 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 the in in the region, specifically what sort of effect on greenhouse gases is an increased travel to to trick to the Tahoe Reno Industrial Center. We know that there's a lot of jobs coming there. There's going to be a lot more traffic. Our current setup is well, we're bursting at the seams really. And and I understand that there are proposed new new highways and we wanted to look at what is the effect on greenhouse gas emissions in the region as a result of of these new highways? So yes, there are two purposes. One is to understand the existing pollutant and energy consumption in the metro area, and that includes Reno and and parts of Washoe County. I'll show you a map in a moment. But then specifically to evaluate the effect of increased growth and additional highways on emissions and energy consumption. We used a couple of models, EPA models to to simulate this increased growth and you'll you'll see that in a moment. The first step was just to get to get a regional inventory. We want to know to get a baseline just for the region, what sort of what quantity of greenhouse gases being emission is is being emitted over the year, over, you know, in a daily basis. We use an EPA model called Moves. And for the life of me, I cannot remember what that stands for. It stands for something, but I guess that's not that important. The turquoise-ish lines are all the roads that were simulated for this in in this model. We take annual estimates of number of passenger cars, number of eighteen-wheelers, number of RVs passing through our system and estimate their greenhouse gas emissions from from those data. I'm going to jump right to the right to the results. What I'm showing here are eight emissions or categories. Some of them are greenhouse gases, some of them are just particulate matter. For this talk, and I think mostly in the in the study, I'm just going to focus on atmospheric carbon dioxide. That's usually the greenhouse gas of of interest. It's the one that most of us have kind of a handle on. But any results that I show for carbon dioxide, we see similar results for all the other greenhouse gases. So just insert different greenhouse gas name for some of these results and the punchline is the same. The two years that we had, recent years that we had the most complete data sets were for 2015 and 2017. And you see that atmospheric carbon dioxide over that two-year period has increased significantly in our region from 3,700 tons per day to about 4,600 tons per day. So you kind of just keep that number in mind when we're looking at the emissions from these other corridors that we study in the in the second in the second part. Yeah, that's all I want to say about just the regional inventory. The the second part of this study or the really the meat of the study was to look at a corridor specific inventory. And we wanted to see what, again, what are the effects of building a new highway over to Trick from Sparks or Spanish Springs area? What is the effect on greenhouse gashes gases? And so what we needed to do was to estimate baseline conditions. Need to estimate what what would a greenhouse gas emissions look like when we increase traffic, when we divert traffic from one corridor to another, you know, what what can we do? And it's all just in the interest of getting a handle on what the emissions will be under different types of scenarios. We developed a pollutant inventory for three corridors, Pyramid Way, Interstate 80, and then the proposed new highway, which which we called La Posada Extension. We're not trying to name it. We just didn't have a good name for it yet. So whenever I'm referring to La Posada, it's it's the extension because I think it does connect up with La Posada Boulevard up here. I think it's is the proposed highway. We used traffic simulation tools, SUMO. It's not an EPA model, but it is accepted by EPA and everyone and his brother uses it. So it's a it's a good tool to estimate emissions from observed traffic patterns and vehicle distributions. So keep those three corridors in mind. What we did is we evaluated the current traffic on Pyramid Way and Interstate 80. So I call that the Pyramid I80 corridor. And then we also evaluated the effect of diverting or increasing traffic over to La Posada. We ran 10 simulations. These can fall into four categories. One of them is just the baseline. We want to know what what does it look like right now? We take the most recent traffic patterns, ran some cars in this model down Pyramid and over on I80 over to Trick and use that as a as a baseline. Then we looked at diverting various percentages of traffic from from the Pyramid Corridor to La Posada. We looked at increasing traffic on Pyramid and I80, which is inevitable. A lot of jobs going out to Trick. There's going to be a lot more traffic on this corridor. And then we compare that with increasing traffic on La Posada. So this should give us a good a good set of of data to to evaluate what what the effects are. This very busy slide is, and you'll probably see this this type of slide in the report, this type of figure for every greenhouse gas, every one of the eight that we looked at. But the shape of the graphs are the same. The numbers might be different, but the punchline is always going to be the same. If you look in the upper left, you have a graph of CO2 emissions for every one of these scenarios on the x-axis. The top of the bars is the total emissions, and that's the most important part. But we also break it down to different quarters, the I80 corridor in blue, the Pyramid Pyramid Way in orange and La Posada Extension in green. So when we're comparing scenarios, it's best just to look at the top, top of this graph. Again, we ran 10 scenarios. We ran two baseline scenarios. One was westbound traffic and one was eastbound traffic. So you can think of that as maybe afternoon traffic and morning traffic in general. We found there was not much difference really in in those emissions. So everything following every one of these scenarios is compared to the eastbound traffic. What we've what we've also done then is we looked at the effects of diverting 10% and 25% of the traffic over to La Posada. And we can look at the effect of greenhouse gas emissions from those scenarios. We also looked at an increase in traffic. And what if we increase traffic by 1,000 vehicles, 2,000 vehicles or 5,000 vehicles just on existing corridors, meaning the Pyramid to I80 corridor? And then what we do is compare that to what if that increase in traffic happened on this La Posada Extension instead? What would be the greenhouse gas emissions from those scenarios? This is a bunch of numbers. I'm really a graphs and numbers kind of guy. So this means a lot to me. I don't expect anybody to read that that carefully. But here, it's it's basically mimicking what's what's in each each one of these graphs. So you can do the addition yourself. So what we've got is, take a look at the baseline. And and this is just eastbound eastbound traffic down Pyramid Highway and over I80. The baseline is in this corridor is 104 tons per day of carbon dioxide. Okay, so that's 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 the number we're always going to be comparing against. If we looked at just as a sample scenario, we looked at the CO2 emissions from this scenario here where we add 5,000 vehicles per day to this existing corridor of the Pyramid I80 corridor. That will result in approximately 144 tons per day of carbon dioxide emissions. Okay, so an increase over the baseline, an increase over the baseline of about 40 tons per day. So keep that number in your head, 40 is using existing highways to increase traffic over to to Trick. What we do then is compare adding 5,000 vehicles, simply putting them on La Posada Extension. The total emissions is 127 from that scenario. That's an increase of 23 over the baseline. 127 minus 104 is 23. So just to bring it all home. If we put 5,000 additional cars per day on the Pyramid I80 corridor, we increase CO2 emissions by 40 tons per day. If we put those cars on this proposed new highway, we only increase it by 23 tons per day. Don't get me wrong, there is an increase. That's I don't want to say that we're we're saving greenhouse gases. If there's more vehicles, there's going to be more more emissions. But we can see, and I'll and I'll show this on the next couple of slides, that diverting traffic or adding traffic to La Posada Extension is a slightly more, I shouldn't say slightly, it's a significantly more efficient way of moving traffic from this corridor over to this corridor, resulting in in more traffic at Trick. The same kind of analysis happens with every one of these 10 scenarios, diverting 10%, diverting 25%, whatever. I won't go through those just in the interest of time. The the like, like I said, the punchline is always the same that whatever scenario we're looking at, it's more efficient to put those vehicles onto La Posada Extension than it is to use existing highways. And let's discuss why that might happen. First of all, what we found out was that emissions from Pyramid Way are significant. Even though you will probably see a lot more traffic on the freeway on on I80, the traffic on Pyramid Way is stop and go. We've all driven Pyramid Way during rush hours. It's stop and go traffic. That's a very inefficient way of operating vehicle and emits a lot of greenhouse gases. So anything we can do to relieve congestion on Pyramid Way is going to help. So stop and go traffic is much worse than free flowing traffic. That's one one thing to to keep in mind. Like I've said before, La Posada Extension as an alternative to the Pyramid I80 corridor is a more efficient path from Sparks to Trick because one free flowing traffic on La Posada Extension emits less greenhouse gas than stop and go traffic. So that's 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 almost self self evident. But the one that's even more self evident is it's just a shorter distance. It's a, I mean, it's just the the hypotenuse of this triangle. So it's I I forget the the actual distances. This might be 13 miles and and this this is, you know, 24 miles or something like that. Having having more vehicles traveling a shorter distance is going to save you a bit in greenhouse gas emissions. So one thing So one thing I do want to reiterate is that we're, we're evaluating the, the Pyramid I eighty corridor. We don't mean to imply that that's the only way that people get over to Trick. I, you know, some people are taking detours, a lot of people are coming from Reno. You know, we just wanted to evaluate one typical corridor for people in Sparks getting over to Trick right now and compare that to maybe an alternative. So we, we need to just take that for what it's worth. We didn't run every scenario or every corridor and, and you know, that would be an infinite number of, of model runs and we'd still be running them today. Let's see, I think that is all I wanted to say about this study. And I know it sounds short. We, we, we ran the same simulation for all the other scenarios. But just in the interest of time and boredom, I won't go through each one of those slides. Though I am well prepared to do so for every one of these scenarios. So if you, if you have questions about the models that we ran or, 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 or choices for these comparisons, I'm, I'm happy to, to take those questions right now.
Okay, thanks David. Questions from the council? And I can't see you right now, David, so thank you. Mr. Dare.
Yes, thank you for that. And I, I think this road is rather important, so I appreciate this information as we look at it. One of the things that if you wouldn't, wouldn't mind speaking to a little bit is just the urgency. I, I get to serve on the health department and I actually am the representative that really works on air quality. So I know how close we are to non-attainment and what that does to our region. And so where someone might look at this and say, well, that's only twenty, twenty-three points different and they're like, well, what does that mean? Well, for us, we're point one away from being not, and not attainment, period. Period. And so people need to realize how important this is and not just look at that particular number. And they need to look at really the situation we're in and we have to change something or we're going to hurt our economy and what can happen in our industrial area. I know you know that better than me. Can you, can you speak to that with what we have here? How could this help?
Well, I, I think the, the main thing that I would get out of this study and, and what you're speaking to maybe is a little bit outside of, of the scope of what we were to do. And what we wanted to do is, is to put some numbers on, on these corridors. You know, we can always just say, oh yeah, we'll move to electric vehicles or we'll do this or that and it's going to help. But until you have actual numbers to show somebody, you can't really, you, you can't really have a lot of confidence in any of the choices that you're making. So our, our goal was mainly to, to put numbers on this. And, and when you're, when you're talking about us being very close to, to non-attainment. Yeah, I mean, there's, there's lots of things that we can, we can do, but what, when I, when I, I'm going to bring up that, let's see here, that slide again. One, one thing we want to, we want to highlight or not, I, I don't want to be lost in this, in this discussion is that increasing traffic is going to increase greenhouse gases. You can build all the roads you want, you can widen them, you can, you can put everybody on. You know, you can make, make everybody drive in a non-stop and go manner and everything like that, but increasing traffic is going to increase greenhouse gas emissions. And so I, I think it's, it's up to us as a community to decide, you know, when, when, when is it enough? Or when, when do we, when are we forced to do something more than, you know, adding lanes to our corridors? But yeah, I, I, again, I, I, it might be a little bit outside of, of, of our scope for this study. What we wanted to do was put, just, just get some numbers, something we can hang our hat on. And, and something that can, that can start the discussion. So when someone says, oh, building roads will solve our problems, you can say, well, it'll help, but it, it won't, you know, we're still increasing greenhouse gases. So, you know, and maybe that's just more of a philosophical discussion that, that we need to have as a community.
And I do get, I do get what you're saying on that because you, I mean, of course that's true. But as we look at the compilation of, of what you're talking about and the safety and just all the different things that come along with that road, time and family and people. So I, I think there's a wisdom. I just know, one of the things, we see so many accidents sitting right there. Cars just sitting there on eighty all the time, like it's pretty much weekly it would seem. And so I can't imagine that just having less cars there, how that could affect quickly that you just don't have this one way only. And, you know, one way to get out there. And so it's just, it just seems wild that that's where we're at. But I, I see a lot of, a lot of factors. Probably only one question on your numbers that you, you mentioned, but I want to just make sure that I understand right. When you did the one number, including La Posada and it was the one up with five thousand, did you, did you shorten the length of drive as well to get the number you got on that last graph? You, on your last graph, you mentioned it's a shorter drive. Did you, and you put the numbers in there? Do we actually do a shorter? Is that compiled in your numbers as well, a shorter distance?
It, it's somewhere in the text of the document and, and to be honest, we, we finished the, the study right before COVID hit and Neil will attest to that, that we, and this was the soonest we could, we could actually get together. And so I, I don't remember the actual numbers. I didn't shorten anything. This is the, this is the proposed road, roadway, you know, shape file that, that we put into our, into our GIS. But I believe this is something like thirteen miles. The La Posada Extension and then this was the Pyramid I eighty is.
Bring that up for a second. Can you bring that up for a second and I'll explain what I'm talking about? Can you bring that picture back up?
Your question, Christopher, is yes. He, they did shorten the distance. That's part of the equation.
Okay, that's what I wanted to know. Okay, thank you.
Okay, am I shared now? Yeah, so you, you think about, think about this as just a, a triangle. This is the hypotenuse. So it's, it's, it's shorter to go, to go this, this pathway. And that, and that is probably one reason why diverting traffic or increasing traffic on this highway results in a, a less, less of an increase, let's say it that way, in greenhouse gases.
I understand. Thank you.
Sure. I mean, I'll, I'll keep this up as a shared in case people want to refer to other, the graphs again.
So you're going to have to speak up council. So in this mode, I can't see anybody.
Um, Mayor, Councilwoman Bybee, I have a question.
Go ahead.
Thank you so much for the presentation. Really valuable information on so many fronts. I know for the city of Sparks and our really strong push for a land spell to develop that eastern corridor above the city of Sparks for our new industrial area as well as a connector to the Tri Center. Is just something we're really pushing hard and this gives us great data to take back to Congress as we're looking for, for that land spell, one more, you know, tool for us to use. But, but obviously for Sparks residents and for my ward, which is all of the vistas in Wingfield Springs, the, the difference for all of Sparks and into Spanish Springs, it gives us another exit. It gives one more, especially in emergency situations. There, there's so much building and so many more people living out north of Sparks. It gives another way to access Interstate eighty if you're heading east or west. So not only to the Tri Center, but the valuable, you know, asset that would be a shorter distance and you know, time is money. So time that it takes people to get out to the Tri Center or beyond. It's, it has an economic impact. It has a health and, you know, environmental impact and a business impact all together. So thank you so much. This is valuable, valuable information for us to use as we move forward. Thank you.
You're welcome.
Anyone else? Okay. Well, for me, obviously this, this was my wake up in the middle of the night moment about six years ago and I, you know, and I looked at that triangle. And it just made sense to me. And, and then it made more sense when we started looking at greenhouse gas emissions. We're going to have the growth anyways. We already know that there's an eight hundred pound gorilla out there in Story County. And they're going to come live with us, eight, approximately eighty percent of them live with us and of that eighty percent live north of I eighty. So it just makes sense that as the car traffic increases to lessen our greenhouse gas emissions just makes sense to me. And as Councilwoman Bybee said, another emergency exit out of the North Valleys there. So there's, you can never have too many of that. And I think we haven't even talked about connecting into the North Valleys of Reno. And I think that then makes this road even more valuable in the future because of the amount of people that live in North Valleys for Reno. So I appreciate your work, guys. We're going to probably have some more for you as we go along here as the road gets shored up from RTC to connect the, the North Valleys to Pyramid. And, and this is great work. And, and I, I think it shows that the city of Sparks is looking ahead and trying to be as environmentally friendly as possible while still being able to grow, which is kind of required by our constitution and our property tax, which is a whole nother discussion we won't get into today. But it, it's wonderful news, wonderful data and appreciate you coming today, David.
It was, it was a pleasure to work with you guys. I, I appreciate the opportunity.
All right, sir. We'll be talking soon as Neil and I have talked about some other issues we'd like to, to talk with you guys about. So hopefully that'll be in the near future. Thank you, sir.
Sounds good. Thank you.
All right. All right. Let's move on to seven point six, Status of the Rental Assistance Program administered by the Reno Housing Authority. And I see Ms. Amy Jones again. Amy, you're up.
Good afternoon, Mayor, Council. Amy Jones for the record, Executive Director for the Reno Housing Authority. Thank you for having me again to report on these funds. And I would like to just say, working with the staff, City Manager Cruz and Armando, they have been amazing. They've been so good to work with. So I just want to let you know how much I appreciate them. Um, to date, we have exhausted and spent all of the CDBG funds. So that was four hundred and two thousand, six hundred and twenty-two. Those funds did have a lower income requirement, but we were able to expend all of those funds. With the additional funds of the two million, to date, we've spent seven hundred and eighty-four thousand of those funds. And we've been able to assist two hundred and two families. So total for the Sparks funding between the two funding sources is almost one point three million that have been put forward to assist residents of the city of Sparks. Um, with the deadline approaching of December thirtieth, I did request that we be able to continue to utilize those funds that we still have in the pipeline through December thirtieth. We're putting in a couple extra check runs so we can make a payment, our final payment on December thirtieth, so we can get as much money out as possible. So I gave some projections to Armando and the City Manager of what we're looking at for the end of the year. And it looks like we have an additional seventy-four applications that we can process through the end of the year, which will be an additional five hundred and thirty-seven thousand dollars. So that's what we anticipate to spend through the end of the year. With the, the remaining monies going back to the city of Sparks and that's about five hundred and ninety-one thousand. And so with that, we will continue to process those applications. We will make sure all of those applications are processed and that money is spent by the end of the year and all of those Sparks residents are paid. You all saw that the eviction moratorium was extended. So with that, that does pose some challenges for the landlords. You know, they've gone a very long time, a lot of these landlords without rent. So I hope that there's additional monies that will become available so we can continue with this program and also having more time to expend those funds. So I'm looking to see what that holds in the upcoming days since the governor did just make this announcement. Because I do believe after the first of the year, we will still need funding to support those landlords. So that, I think that's all I have to report today. I think I touched on everything. And if there is an opportunity for us to have more funding, we will, we will accept that.
Okay, questions from the council? Mr. Dare.
Hi, how you doing, Amy? Good to see you.
Good to see you.
A couple of quick questions. One is, you mentioned, so we have, we just, we say that we actually do get to help the seventy-four. So seventy-six people, how many people are in the pipeline that we didn't get to help? I only say that not, not as a we know the numbers as we're looking at large.
Um, so what we do have is we have a waitlist, which is for the entire county and staff said this morning, there's a hundred and seventy-five people on that waitlist. If there is the possibility of additional funding after the first of the year, then we will put through all of those applications as well as make a push for more. So again, I'm really hoping that I will get some information in the upcoming days about extending the funding from the state or any additional funds.
And I think that brings my, my second question just has to do with state money. I know they put money into the coffer for our residents as well. But it looks like we haven't got through our money. So are you going to be able to use any state money to help those people or are we, are we, if, if there's no new money or are we stuck? Where are we at with that and with state money?
So as of right now, the state funds do have to be spent by December thirtieth. But it sounds like, again, this is very, very recent information, but it sounds like we may be able to extend those funds beyond the December thirtieth date as long as the application was received prior to. And all payments are for April to December of twenty twenty. So those funds, if that's the case, then that will absolutely help Sparks residents as well.
Okay, thank you.
Any other questions? Ms. Ms. Bybee?
Um, hi, Amy. I did have, I wanted to clarify on the total that Spar- of the Sparks money, you received all funding that we gave you from our CARES Act funding. Did you say that five hundred and ninety-one thousand is going to be returned to the city of Sparks?
That's the, that's the estimate, yes, that I spoke with City Manager Cruz about.
Okay, and I guess we'll have a further conversation with the City Manager on what use, if we can find other uses for those funds, but we are receiving five hundred and ninety-one thousand returned. Okay. Thank you.
Amy, you're almost to the finish line. You and your staff have done such great work. I mean, in a very, very short period of time to vet all those applications. And you're just talking about Sparks. You're also playing all the Reno stuff too. And I know that you guys have worked really, really hard to do what you're doing. So we want to thank you for all, all your hard work.
In total for Washoe County, we're projected to spend six point five million dollars in a very short time. So, and you know, you say there's that light and you know, we kind of go back and forth here that we've done it in such a short time and it's been a very heavy lift that there is that light, but now it sounds like there's going to be possibly more funding. So we're excited and we're going to maybe look at it a little differently. So.
Well, make sure that you get some downtime in, in this little off period. You're right. If there's more funding, then yes, you're right. We're going to allocate more.
Yeah. So, well, thank you. Thank you, all of you.
All right. Thank you, Amy.
You're welcome.
With that, we'll move on to item seven point seven, update on the cumulative fiscal impact on the COVID nineteen pandemic. And I believe we have Mr. Cronk somewhere here.
Getting there. There we are. Good afternoon, Mayor Lawson and members of council. My name is Jeff Cronk. I'm your Chief Financial Officer. I want to share my screen with you. If you don't mind, give me just a sec. Um, I want to share my screen with you. If you don't mind, give me just a second here. Okay, can we see that? Okay?
We can.
Okay, very good. Well, that's encouraging because you're the most important audience. Um, so this is going to look familiar to you and and actually my intent is to keep my comments brief because honestly, this is information uh, just to keep you updated on on how we're progressing through this pandemic on the on the financial piece of it. Um, but honestly, the picture didn't change a whole lot since what I what I what I showed you last month. So I just want to keep my comments brief because honestly, the picture hasn't changed a whole lot. Um, that being said, um, as we look into December, the and when I come back and and do this again in in January and give you an update, it's gonna look very different because there's a lot of activity that's going on in December. So I'll touch base on that a little bit. But where we're at right now, and and when I say right now, this is this is mostly, these numbers are through November. Um, our expenses incurred to date is just under thirteen and a half million dollars. That's what we reported to the state. Um, our our revenue loss uh, to date is just under one point nine million. So our total combined uh, financial impact, and when I say to date, this is this is going all the way uh, since um, March when all this started. So our our total uh, financial impacted date is just a little over fifteen point three million dollars. As we look forward, um, we're we're trying to say to see how this is gonna impact us going all the way through this current fiscal year. So you know, I'm I'm anticipating that uh, those those revenues lost to date will 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 continue to increase a little bit, but uh, you know, certainly at a lesser rate. Um, and then that that should total about two point eight million based on the information that we have right now. And of course, everything is really fluid. So it it does change quite a bit. So um, I want to talk about revenues in a little bit, but first just a quick snapshot of what our expenses are. Um, and again, if you recall, uh, this uh, slide before this, this sort of uh, uh, the way I presented this before in kind of two different buckets, if you will. One, we're capturing expenses that we're spending uh, for our own costs that we've incurred. And then the second bucket would be expenses that we've incurred um, regional, uh, region wide. And and again, I won't spend a lot of time on this slide because again, the 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 picture of this hasn't changed a whole lot. Uh, the numbers have increased, uh, you know, just because of the amount of time since the last month that we've uh, that that we've talked, but the mix hasn't changed a whole lot. Uh, if you remember, we were spending about twenty percent, eighty percent uh, being a twenty percent in the regional, eighty percent on 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 citywide cost. That's increased a little bit on the regional side so that now we're almost one quarter, three quarters, right in that range. Um, but this again, this picture is gonna change dramatically in December. So probably what's what's um, uh, just as informative as what's on this page is what's not on this page. Um, and and you'll see, you know, things next month when I, when I, when I uh, present to you uh, regarding uh, a lot of expenses related to the Nevada CARES Campus, of course. Uh, you know, the UNR research project, uh, they just uh, started billing us for that. So that's gonna increase quite a bit. And then, of course, the incident, uh, uh, costs that are getting trued up, uh, managed at the county level. Uh, so you know, among other things. So there's a lot of activity that's going on in December. Um, so just kind of let you know that as we progress, this is getting closer to probably more of a fifty fifty spend um, as to how what we're gonna use the the CARES Act dollars to reimburse our costs versus the what we're gonna use to fund regional expenses. Um, so tha- that's the expense side. Uh, I really wanted to spend a kind of quick little thought on the on the revenue side is as we've talked before. Um, the biggest piece obviously is C-tax, but what you'll notice here is is that over the last several months, these numbers have improved as far as what we're projecting to uh, to be impacted by. Um, all these, all these items that you see on this slide here are general fund except the very bottom one, which is which is the road fund. Uh, we have been impacted and are continuing to see the impact on our gas taxes that we're receiving because people just frankly aren't driving as much. So um, so you know, that's certainly impacting us. But you know, of course, I want to spend more of my time on on the C-tax because that's the one we've we've been talking about um, and is the greatest effect to our general fund. Uh, but boy, that number really has come down quite a bit. And and I just have to say the uh, the the consumer has been resilient to to put it to put it mildly. So when we uh, set our budget, if you recall, going into fiscal twenty-one, when we set our fiscal twenty-one budget, we did it pre-COVID, um, pre-COVID uh, impact because uh, we did that on purpose. We wanted to set a baseline. And so now, a- and I'm glad we did that because now it's it's a lot easier for us to to gauge, if you will, uh, the impact according to how how revenues are coming in according to our budget. So um, the very good news is that uh, the uh, the first rev- or the first quarter revenue for C-taxes um, has come in slightly above budget, you know, for the and when I say first quarter, so that would be July through September. So you know, we were a little nervous when when July and August numbers came out. They were a little soft. But um, honestly, September came back with a with a with a vengeance and and really had a fantastic month for us. So that that gave us a a strong quarter to start, you know, to start the year. Will there still be uh, um, you know, months in the, you know, coming months that are of concern? Quite possibly. Um, you know, this this thing is something we're just uh, learning as we go. So you know, I still preach caution, uh, but you know, ending our first quarter, uh, even slightly, just slightly over budget, it's it's really on track. Uh, gives us a strong hand, you know, in case, in case things do turn down a little bit. And and I do still, I mean, I, when I say I, I'm not the only one that's thinking this, that the conventional wisdom is that uh, we're gonna see some some softness. You know, as as we get into maybe the November, December, January time period, just because this this current spike in cases um, is uh, is pretty brutal right now. So you know, as things uh, you know, retrench a little bit and and the impact on businesses, it's something that we're just gonna watch. But um, for as as far as C-tax goes, our our, what we know is data through September. And uh, honestly, it's uh, it's it's been fantastic to see. So um, so that's the good news and and we can use good news, right? So thi- this slide, uh, I I'm not gonna spend a lot of time on this. You've seen this before where, you know, really the difference between the blue and the red line is the the blue line is what our budget was and our expectations. And then the red line is what kind of actually happened. Um, and then what we expect going forward on the little dotted red line. But so you'll see that the total impact really just happened in those uh, three months in in March, April, May. That's kind of where we saw um, the trough of our of our revenue impact. And and when it bounced back in in starting in June, when the economy started opening up a little bit um, again, um, albeit even on a um, a limited basis, it really uh, came back quickly. Um, and we really see that in the in the next slide when we're talking about unemployment. And this one is is I I'm I'm, I was ecstatic to see this, honestly. Um, and I think I shared this with you last month and it's just, it just uh, bears, you know, watching and repeating how how this is tracking. But if you're looking uh, how we're doing, the yellow dotted line there is the Reno Sparks um, MSA, the Metropolitan Statistical Area, which is kind of the greater area. Um, and and just kind of how we compare against Las Vegas and then Nevada as a whole and then the nation. And of course, you can see the uh, the spike up in the unemployment, uh, which correlates to when we were losing a lot of our our sales tax revenue. The the nice part about that is that when the economy did open up, a a lot of the jobs came back and are continuing to come back. That's the good news. Um, and again, through through September is is where we see our sales taxes and 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 these numbers here are, uh, you know, the last numbers here are are preliminary. Uh, but the 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 trend is is um, clearly going in the right direction. So you know, that's what we're watching. We're watching to see if this turns, you know, uh, quite frankly, uh, when when people stop working, that's when uh, that's when our our C-tax revenues start hurting as well. So it's all connected. So anyway, I wanted to share that with you. Um, before I move on to my last slide, are there any questions on what I already talked about? Because otherwise, I'm gonna switch topics just briefly.
I I just have one thing to say.
Please.
If you don't mind. Um, the, I think it's interesting what our numbers are and what an amazing sight to see unemployment so low. I mean, there's obviously still some work to be done and we're moving in the right direction. But this is with every, with a lot of things closed or at least down to a low percentage. So it almost makes you wonder what's gonna happen when this thing opens up. Or I mean, are we gonna be back to that place where we do not have enough workers in the region to handle the jobs? We've been there before. It just seems like we have an in, a very interesting scenario about to unfold too.
Well, and Councilman Dare, if I could also kind of piggyback on that, i- i- it's also looking back, it it's one of those, um, you know, you look back and you're saying, oh, man, where could, where would we have been if this had not happened, right? You know, what if the the whole what if scenario? But our economy was cooking. And I'm, it, you know, I'm not joking. It was just firing at all cylinders. Um, and where would these numbers be if the if the pandemic didn't happen? So the question is, and this is what kind of everybody wants to know, is kind of along the lines of exactly what you're talking about. Um, how how long will it get, will it take us? Or will we ever get back to that point where we're firing on all cylinders? The encouraging part is that it sure seems like we can't. If we open, if we open things back up, um, and the consumer and the traveler, you know, and everybody, uh, you know, kind of gets back to the normal routine that we encountered a year ago, right? Um, I see no, no reason that structurally in our economy that we couldn't see those numbers again and kind of get back on target. The question is, how long will that take? So but structurally, um, I don't see uh, um, things of concern like a a mass exodus or or um, um, you know, a a large hits on our on our property taxes, our home values. Um, this does seem temporary. Now, how long is that temporary, right? That's the big question. So good question. Uh, the last thing I just wanted to uh, uh, give you is is it's a little bit of a um, uh, change of pace, but I've shared this with you before, but we've finalized our audit and and actually our first business item is gonna, Debbie is gonna present uh, the uh, the 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 CAFER, the final CAFER to you and and the audit results and stuff. But this is just a snapshot of the general fund. And just to kind of show you that we're 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 starting fiscal twenty-one in a, with a strong, with in a fairly strong position. Um, you know, we had our our budget of six uh, six percent ending fund balance for the prior year. That's fiscal twenty is what I'm talking about now. Um, and then we actually ended at six, at nine point six, which is what we had um, estimated at the time. And and sure enough, that's uh, kind of exactly where we landed. So anyway, all that being said, you know, the combination of of finishing last year strong uh, in a, in a, in a strong position and then starting off our current fiscal year, at least with our C-taxes and our other revenues, um, either at or or slightly above budget, um, gives me a lot of confidence when I look forward saying that even if uh, the revenues start struggling a little bit with this current surge, um, i- i- I think we have a fairly strong hand that we can uh, manage uh, a downfall, you know, if that so happens over the next quarter or so. That's all I wanted to share with you. Um, you know, unless uh, you had any questions? Here, I'm gonna, there we go.
Questions from the council? All right. Well, thank you, Jeff.
Thank you. Thank you. Have a great day and Merry Christmas, everybody.
Yep, and happy holidays. Okay, moving on, eight point one, consent items. Anyone want to pull a consent item? I'm looking for a motion. There's just no humor left in here.
Move to approve consent item.
I'll second.
Motion by Dare, second by Vanderwell. Any further discussion? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Most carries unanimously. All right, moving on. Nine point one, consideration possible acceptance of the city comprehensive annual financial report, the CAFER for fiscal year nineteen twenty and possible approval of the city's plans of corrective actions related to the city's external auditor's conclusions and recommendations. And there, Miss Dare, are you ready?
I am ready. Thank you. Thank you. Good afternoon, Mr. Mayor and members of the council. I'm Debbie Kinder, your compliance accounting manager for the record. And I'm before you today to present the twenty twenty, twenty twenty comprehensive annual financial report for your approval and to request your approval of two associated corrective action plans. Our camp comprehensive annual financial reports include our audited financial statements. And our auditors have determined that those financial statements are materially correct and that they fairly represent the financial condition of the city. However, there are some weaknesses discovered that require us to submit corrective action plans. So um, much as I would love to tell you that this is the third consecutive year with no financial findings, I can't. We had a timing issue this year and we gave our auditors our financial information on the same day that we posted an incorrect tax receivable entry and before we had done our checks and balances. Because the auditors found our error first, which we already have checks and balances in place, but we didn't run those balances. And because they found it first, we have a finding. So our corrective action plan is to not give them our financial information until we run our final checks and balances. Um, we have three federal grant findings this year and they are very similar to last year's grant findings. Um, the first grant finding is related to the CDBG grants. And last year, we had reported the incorrect number of people served based on our documentation. This year, we reported the incorrect ethnicity and gender of the people served. So our corrective action plan is to create this report earlier than usual and then confirm all of the numbers on that report before we give it to the auditors. Our second finding is related to environmental reviews. Last year, we had an environmental review, a project that didn't require an environmental review, but we didn't create the paperwork that said we didn't have to have one. This year, the environmental review problem is that a prior year multi-year project, which had an environmental review done, the scope of the project changed and we did not reevaluate that environmental review and modify it based on the expanded scope. So our corrective action plan is that we will, we have created a method to monitor projects as they change to assure that our environmental reviews are considered. The third federal grant finding was the prevailing wage, which is exactly the same finding that we had last year. And although we corrected that in twenty twenty, we did not correct it in the first months of twenty twenty. So the early years of this fiscal year continued to have the problem. We, um, it has been corrected and I don't anticipate that it'll come next year. Our corrective action plan is hopefully to get some software to monitor that, but in the meantime, staff knows the requirements to have a contractor submit their reports in a timely manner. Those are the federal financial or federal grant findings. And we have one state budget finding, which requires us to submit a corrective action plan to the state. That's in relation to us spending fifty-six thousand, five hundred and eighty-four dollars more than we had budgeted in the community support function of the general fund. And that overspending came three purposes. The first was that we spent for the Community Assistance Center. And the second, we spent more homeless overflow shelter. And thirdly, we had an unanticipated budget reef, uh, grant refund. Those three things combined to give us a fifty-six thousand dollar over budget. And our corrective action is to try and train staff to have those unbudgeted expenditures a little earlier. Because if they had had them expended prior to June thirtieth, we could have come to council and had a budget augmentation or a budget change done. But it was too late when the spending occurred for us to make that change. So we're gonna try and educate and and bring that forward to you sooner. So those are the two corrective action plans. And if you approve the CAFER today and those two corrective action plans, then we will, for the fortieth time, submit to the Government Finance Officers Association an application for their award for excellence in financial reporting. And that concludes my presentation. I have Kurt Licker and Tammy Miramonte are available on Zoom today. So if you have any questions of our auditors or of me, then I'll be happy to answer them now.
Sorry, questions from the council? Okay, seeing none. I'm looking for a motion then.
Move to approve, Abbott.
Okay, I think I want you to read that one.
Can we read it all?
Yeah, because it's because of the corrective actions.
Problem. No momental. Um, I moved, I'm not muted, right? No.
You are not muted.
Good. I wanted to do it right. Um, I moved to accept the comprehensive annual financial report, approve the plans of corrective action for fiscal year twenty nineteen to twenty twenty as presented and authorized the chief financial officer to distribute the CAFER to interested parties and to the GFOA for award consideration.
Vanderwell, second.
Okay, got a motion and a second. Any further discussion? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye. Aye.
Opposed? Most carries unanimously. Thank you, Debbie.
Much. Thank you.
All right, nine point two, consideration discussion of possible approval of the mayor's two appointments to the Sparks Planning Commission from the following pool of applicants listed in alphabetical order. Claire Andriola, Richard Arrendo Ortiz, Candace Beck, Damon Harrell, Marilyn Kramer, Kelly Lucetti, Jim Mormon, John Novak, Reed Peterson, Evan Pritzos, Marilyn Kramer, Kelly Luchetti, Jim Mormon, John Novak, Reed Peterson, Evan Pritzos, Ricky Rodriguez Elkins, David Salzsoza, William Stewart, and Alan Sterling and Joanne Tierman and T Tran. Who's gonna handle this one? I'm sorry, I didn't look ahead.
I, I can, I can take it Mayor Lawson. For the record, you know, Kurt's your city manager, uh, here today to announce the mayor's two selections to fill the two planning commission vacancies. Uh, but before we do that, I am incredibly excited that we had sixteen applicants for, for that body. Uh, we've, we've struggled in the past actually to get applicants to sit on that body and to see that level of interest from our community is, uh, is remarkable. And, uh, and I, I hope it shows good things to come and interest in all of the, the various boards and committees that we have across the city. Uh, with that said, uh, Mayor Lawson has chosen Marilyn Kramer and Evan Pritzos to fill the two vacancies and is asking for your concurrence today.
Okay, any discussion? Or motion, Ms. Bybee?
I'm ready to make a motion, Mr. Mayor.
Okay, go ahead.
I, I move to appoint Marilyn Kramer and Evan Pritzos to the Sparks Planning Commission, each for a four-year term ending December thirty first, twenty twenty four.
Thank you, looking for a second?
I'll second.
Mr. Anderson? Any further discussion? Okay, seeing none? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
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 Opposed? Most carries unanimously. Thank you. I think we got two good choices there. I, I actually reviewed all sixteen applications and it was a tough decision with, but we have some great people in the wings if anything happens. So, all right, thank you. We're gonna move on to, uh, nine point three. Presentation discussion of possible approval of changes to the city of Sparks group health, health document to reflect coverage for basic conscious sedation during dental procedures which deemed medically necessary. Effective Ju- January one, twenty twenty one. And I see Ms. Mindy Falk is here for us today.
Good afternoon, Mr. Mayor and members of city council, Mindy Falk, human resource director. The change before you today is a change to our group health plan for calendar year twenty twenty one. Feel strange and exciting to say twenty twenty one. I'm gonna talk to you a little bit about the process and then about the specific change before you. The city's group health insurance is self-insured, meaning that the city controls the benefits, not an insurance company. And to make changes to our benefit plan, there is a two-step process. First, it goes to the group health committee and they approve it and recommend it to come to you at the city council. And then the city council would, um, either approve or reject the change to the plan document. The city group health committee is established through the contract negotiations and is comprised of three voting members, which are operating engineers and both the police and fire unions. The five non-voting members include supervisory contracts, resolutions, and retirees. The change before you today is to the dental benefits. The group health committee asked human resources to research the plan documents definition of sedation under the dental benefit. They had believed it'd been outdated and it turns out that was true. We, uh, human resources did research with our broker LP and the definition in our, um, plan document was not in line with the current practices of the American Dental Association or the ADA. On November nineteenth, twenty twenty, the group health committee voted to change the plan document to add the sedation benefit to be within the ADA recommendations. This does not mean sedation is available for everything at the dentist, only within the guidelines set out by the ADA. The cost of this is minimal, is estimated to be about ten thousand five hundred a year and it is part of the three thousand dental, dental maximum each member has each year. This would be effective, um, January first, twenty twenty one. And with that, I'm happy to answer any questions.
Questions from the council? All right, seeing none, I'm looking for a motion. Mr. Dare?
Move to approve changes to the city of Sparks group health plan document to reflect coverage for basic conscious sedation during dental procedures when deemed medically necessary, effective January first, twenty twenty one. Thank you.
Looking for a second?
I'll second.
Second for Mr. Anderson. Any further discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
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 Opposed? Most carries unanimously. Thank you.
Thank you. Happy holidays.
Thank you, you too. Nine point four, consideration discussion of possible approval of an interlocal cooperative agreement, AC five seven one seven with the Regional Transportation Commission of Washoe County for projects included in the RTC's fiscal year twenty twenty two program of projects. Ms. Amber Sosa is here to help us out today.
Thank you. Good afternoon, Mayor Lawson, members of council. For the record, Amber Sosa, transportation manager. As stated, this is an interlocal cooperative agreement between the city of Sparks and the Regional Transportation Commission, the RTC. What this does is this agreement provides a means for the city and the RTC to work together on regional roads and sparks. And most specifically, those, uh, those that are defined in projects in the RTC's POP, their program of projects for federal fiscal year twenty twenty two. Uh, with that, we have RTC's Director of Engineering, Brian Stewart, and I turn it over to him for your presentation.
Good afternoon, Mayor Lawson, Spark City Council. Great to see you and I'm happy to be here. I'm Brian Stewart, the Director of Engineering for RTC. I do have a PowerPoint associated with this, so if you bear with me, I will share my screen. Okay, are you able to see that?
Yes, sir.
Fabulous, thank you very much. All right, today I'd like to walk you through some projects, uh, that the RTC has, uh, completed, is working on, and then, uh, our program of what we're looking at for approval for the twenty-two ICA. So in twenty twenty construction year, even though we were in, uh, uh, you know, a tough time with the COVID nineteen, we were able to finish or nearly finish, uh, most of the projects in Sparks. East Greg Street, we rehabbed that, uh, street. East Prater Way, we, uh, completed that project. We also did preventative maintenance on regional roads within the, uh, city of Sparks. And we, uh, uh, completed some traffic signal timing to help, uh, capacity and, and lessen delays on Sparks Boulevard. We have continuing major projects within the city of Sparks and I'll go into, uh, more detail of each one of these, but there's the bus stop ADA improvements and pedestrian connectivity. There is the Audi Wells Boulevard Complete Streets Project. We're widening Pyramid Way and then the Sparks Boulevard also widening. What is our bus stop ADA improvements and pedestrian connectivity? In short, over three fiscal years, two million dollars a year to help improve access to, uh, the transit system and connect people from the road system or the sidewalks uh, to another mode of transportation being that, being the transit. As you know, our, uh, some of our bus stops are in really bad condition. And so we wanted to, uh, make sure that we were ADA compliant and being able to, uh, allow people to transfer easily between walking modes, bicycle modes, and our, uh, bus system. So that, uh, project is ongoing every year here for three years and we're expecting a lot of, uh, construction activity on these, uh, here in this upcoming construction season, uh, so that we can get these, uh, important improvements, uh, completed. Our Audi Wells project, exciting project. Most of you probably have heard of this project, uh, to really, uh, invest, uh, transportation money into that corridor. And it is a complete street project. As you can see from the cross-section, you, you're gonna have areas of the cross-section that allows and, and keeps people in their areas, so safeties improve significantly. Traffic, there will also be a cycle track, uh, that will be raised and separated from the traffic as well as pedestrian ways in the corridor. It switches cross-sections as you go through the corridor. Little more detailed than what I, we wanted to present today, but we're really focused on the safety and mobility in there. This project goes from Ninth Street in Reno all the way over to Pyramid Highway. And, uh, it, it's, uh, gonna start next, uh, construction season, next year. We're excited to do that. And it will be one, probably go into the second year just because of the size of it. It's, you know, nearly three and a half miles of improvements that we'll, uh, be installing. Our Sparks Boulevard project is in design right now. It is, uh, a widening and capacity, or sorry, capacity multimodal improvements. Multimodal is again, putting each mode of transportation in a corridor, in an area, in a cross-section to improve safety. Um, we're gonna go from, uh, Greg Street, uh, all the way up to Bering. So starting in the south there with the southeast connector ties into it, Veterans Parkway now and, uh, and work on that. That is, um, proposed in twenty twenty four, uh, to go. We're looking at different ways and working with the great team that Sparks provide us and the subject matter experts, uh, with Amber and John Erickson others in your, uh, department, Bob Stricker, to, uh, help ensure that we get the right design in there and, uh, the timing and looking at all the impacts and really getting the best project absolutely possible. Uh, super exciting one is Pyramid Highway, three ninety-five connector. This is phase one of, of a project that's multi-year in the regional transportation plan. Again, like everything else we do with you, capacity, the multimodal and the safety improvements all at once to ensure that our corridors are safe. We will be partnering with NDOT significantly on this project since they do own and operate, uh, Pyramid Highway. And so they're doing oops. We're doing the design and they will administer the construction, uh, of the project. Uh, basically, it's a widening from Queen Way to Los Otos. So from the four, uh, lanes that you see out there today, there will be, uh, six lanes. And then multimodal and safety improvements, uh, throughout, but, uh, specifically Los Otos to Golden Valley. Uh, some paths to help, uh, people navigate safely in that corridor that might not be driving. Anticipating to start construction in twenty twenty-three. It's a estimated construction cost of forty-five million. Uh, RTC, uh, was able to land a build grant for this project, uh, which we're super excited from. A very competitive, uh, funding source, so twenty-three million of that, uh, will be federal dollars from the bill grant invested into, uh, Sparks, or sorry, into Pyramid Highway in this, uh, area. We're also gonna get five million of state funding to help this, uh, eight million in, uh, other federal funding. That's either, that's STBG funding or, um, they call it highway improvement program, uh, HIP funding. And then, uh, nine million from the RTC fuel tax. That's our proposed, uh, financial structure for, for the, um, construction cost. So for twenty twenty-one, we're gonna be busy in Sparks. Um, I'll get to a map here at the end, but, uh, Packer Way, we're gonna do some road reconstruct on as well as Wild Island Court. And El Rancho, uh, even though we're advancing that project, um, so that it can be included in the Audi Wells project. Um, it's, uh, gonna be El Rancho Rehab from Audi to Greenbury. Uh, York and Pyramid will do some, uh, improvements as far as moving, uh, uh, some striping and, and helping capacity in that area as well as our traffic enhancement program, uh, where we go into intersections and surgically look at how we can do, um, some improvements to improve, uh, capacity and that's at Victorian, Battleborn and Victorian sixteen. Again, eighty-six A and the transit will do probably thirty-five to, um, fifty, uh, stops, uh, throughout the region, including a significant number in Sparks, so look forward to that. And then ITS, which is Intelligent Transportation System Three. We're trying to connect, uh, our signals to be talking to one another, so we can help capacity. We can watch the capacity and what needs to be done in time, uh, our, our projects and our signals appropriately for, to deal with the capacity in the region. So for twenty twenty-two, the ICA, we want to continue our programs that we do. Our twenty twenty-two preventative maintenance, typically we do about a hundred and fifty to two hundred lane miles every year within the region. We work again with your experts, uh, in the, the, the system, Bob Stricker and, um, Amber Sosa, to ensure we're doing the right, uh, projects in the city of, of Reno for this. And there won't be conflicts between utilities and that kind of stuff that would go on. And so, um, we're working on that list and we'll detail that list out as we, uh, understand which roads qualify for, for those, uh, projects and, and need those. And preventative maintenance is keeping our, our good roads in good shape. And instead of letting them get bad, so they have to be reconstructed, we, we try to spend some money at a lower rate, uh, to take care of those. We'll also do our roadway rehab, so those, uh, roads that are older and, and have, um, a little bit lower PCI, we can, uh, rehab and reconstruct. And so that, uh, you know, depending on the design could be an overlay or could be a total, a reconstruction of the subgrade and below to ensure that we get the structural support that we need on that. Again, we're, uh, developing that list now and we'll have that and working with, uh, your team, uh, to ensure we're getting the right projects on that. The TE Spot eleven will be, uh, again, it's, it's part of our RTP. It is a, um, program of where we set up and, uh, fix our, enhance our traffic intersections to flow better. And, uh, we'll be developing that through the TOMS group, which is Traffic Operations and Maintenance Committee. Again, uh, Sparks has the subject matter experts on that committee and we get good projects to come out of that. And continue with our ITS and then we'll continue also with our ADA access, um, and, um, transit and pedestrian connectivity. So I'll land here and rest on, on the map, so I can, uh, answer any questions that you, you may have. But, uh, we're really excited about moving forward into our programs and working, continuing to work with Sparks on these great projects.
All right, any questions from the council?
I have a couple of things, sir.
Go ahead, Mr. Dare.
Very cool. Um, one, I, I kind of wanna tell you how excited I'm about a few things. We want to thank you guys. There's a lot of things happening, obviously. This is a lot of work, but you're even one mention, this is the public transportation that's been reaching into Sparks and then that you included City Hall in the zone. I appreciate that, uh, good stuff. The bu- bus stops, that's one of the things that I just, uh, keep wanting to continue to put on the forefront. I thank you. It was nice to hear that the funding, I didn't realize before the funding was in place, but that's awesome that we're moving forward. And we'd just like to see those continued to be on the high rail for me in just looking at that. Uh, and then, great job on getting the, the build grant, uh, to RTC. And I, I just wanna say that and cheer them on, that, that's them going up and above hitting for us to try to get something for our region. And so just thank you so much. Pyramid Highway is unsafe to walk and ride bikes. People do it all the time right there at very high speeds. And so I believe this is going to definitely help, uh, greatly. And so I, 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 I more just wanna congratulate, thank you guys and say thank you for the hard work than have a lot of questions. But, uh, I think as our region grows, we're looking at the right things and even adding, uh, El Rancho into Audi Boulevard. Sometimes it's hard to get additions into things that needs to happen, so that's, that's great. So thank you.
Any other questions or comments?
I had a comment, Mayor. Um, uh, thank you for the presentation. It's always exciting to see, uh, uh, lots of things going on and lots of things, uh, much needed in our region and, uh, excited about a couple of things. The, um, Audi Boulevard, uh, corridor improvements, uh, with our new Audi district especially and for that whole section of our city, uh, I think is going to be a huge bonus, uh, for our residents, for our businesses, for economic development, for hopefully more housing, maybe affordable housing, but that whole corridor improvement is much needed and, uh, excited about that. And I did have a question on the Sparks Boulevard widening. How many lanes are you looking at order at? I know it's in design, but do you anticipate how many lanes, uh, added to that section of Sparks Boulevard? Thank you.
Here's Brian Stewart, Director of Engineering. Thank you, council member, for the question. In general, you're going from the four lanes that are mostly out there, there's some sections that are obviously wired, but from four to six lanes. So it will be a significant improvement at that south end as you're coming up into the highway, especially the afternoon, uh, push of traffic that comes, uh, up, uh, to the north to, uh, get home. Um, but, uh, yeah, it's four to six lanes.
Okay, thank you. And obviously our traffic increased with the southeast connector. Uh, many more people, including myself, come down Sparks Boulevard now instead of Vista. So, uh, I'm, I'm sure you've seen that increase in traffic and that keeps the flow going and that's, uh, super important. Thank you. I appreciate it.
All right, any other comments, questions?
I got, I got one.
Go ahead.
Um, on the Sparks Boulevard widening, Brian, is, are you gonna maintain that into all the, the bicycle walkway or the, along the river right there? Is that gonna be still there?
Thank you, council member, for that question. Yeah, we are. Multimodal is important to the RTC and we plan and, uh, that is paramount to keep that, uh, facility in place. Um, at the end of it all, you know, it'll be a nice connection to clear to, uh, the southeast connector path that, uh, you know, allows folks to really use that, uh, long distance of multimodal path.
That's awesome. And then definitely I, I'm pumped about Audi. I can't wait to see that done. And then on the, uh, the preventative maintenance, that, have you guys always done that? I know we do it in the city, but have you? we do it in the city, but have you guys always done that for, or to help us?
Yeah, for the region, we have in the, in the current RTP allocated $18 million for pavement preservation, regional wide on regional roads. And so, yes, we do that, and we work with you, we collect the data and look at the roads, and it's a great partnership to do that. So you're dealing with the local roads, and then we deal with the regional roads for that effort.
Thank you, sir.
Any other question from the council?
I had one, and actually, if we're ready, I'd make a motion as well, if you're okay, sir.
Yeah, go ahead.
So first, I just wanted to say, Brian, thank you guys for the presentation, and likewise, thank you for, as you're putting these projects out there, the way that you guys interact with the public is fantastic. That Sparks Boulevard widening, a majority of that runs through Ward 3 that I represent, and you guys have been fantastic communicating with homeowners along the roadway there and already engaging them in the plan and what things you're looking at. And I just want to say thank you for what you guys are doing that way. And with that being said, let me get back to the motion here. I move to approve the interlocal cooperative agreement AC 5717 with the Regional Transportation Commission of Washoe County for fiscal year 2022 program of projects.
Second by Councilman Dare. Any further discussion? Seeing none. All those in favor signify by saying aye. Opposed? Okay, motion carries unanimously. Thank you, Brian. Thank you, Amber. Okay. 9.5, consideration discussion of possible authorization refund regional road impact fees to Community Health Alliance in the amount of $40,609.85. Mr. Erickson?
Good afternoon, Mayor, City Council members. John Erickson, City Engineer for the record. When we were looking at the Community Health Alliance project over there at 2244 Audi Boulevard, we inadvertently assessed regional road impact fees in the amount of $40,609.85. The applicant asked the staff to go back and take a look at those fees, and we determined that we assessed those inadvertently. Sparks Municipal Code does allow the City Council to, the authority to refund any fee that was collected in error. Staff is requesting council approved a refund of the regional road impact fees for this permit. That concludes my presentation. I'd be happy to answer any questions.
Questions from the council? Okay, looking for a motion. Don't be shy.
I'll make the motion, Mr. Mayor. I move to approve a refund of the regional road impact fees to Community Health Alliance in the amount of $40,609.85.
I'll second the motion, Mr. Mayor.
Hey, we got a motion by Councilwoman Vanderwell, and a second by Councilwoman Bybee. Any further discussion? Seeing none. All those in favor signify by saying aye. Opposed? Motion carries unanimously. All right. Thanks, John.
You bet. Have a nice holiday.
Have a happy holidays to you. 9.6, consideration discussion of possible approval of software subscription service agreement AC 5716 with Permit Rocket Software LLC, DVA E-Permit Hub to provide electronic plan review software services in the Acela Regional Business License and Permit Platform in the amount of $85,516.00. Armando?
Good afternoon, Mayor Lawson, members of the council. This is Armando Arnellis, the Assistant Community Services Director, and this is the first of three items that will be presented to you this afternoon. This particular item, as you indicated, is a subscription to acquire software that is a plug-in to the Acela software, which the city and its regional partners currently use for the submittal review and issuance of both building permits and business licenses. The addition of E-Permit Hub is intended to facilitate the use of Acela by our plan reviewers, permit staff, and most importantly, the city's customers. And really, city staff is hoping that with the addition of E-Permit Hub, that interface between Acela and the user will be significantly better and will result in an increase in the percentage of applications that are submitted electronically. And that number stands at about 40% in the current fiscal year. The city's adopted budget for the current fiscal year includes funding for the initial implementation fee, which is $59,620, plus a usage fee for the first year estimated at $25,896, which gets us to that total initial year cost of 85,516. And again, this assumes that 40% of the plan review work will be done electronically. Costs for the future years of the subscription, subscription will be based each, well, currently in the fall, budget process, and we're doing that now, and we're assuming that in subsequent years, the percentage of plans that are submitted electronically will go up by 20 to 25%. And so those future costs will be addressed as part of the regular budget process. Staff is recommending approval of the agreement, and I am available as well as Mark Miranda, your building official, who frankly knows a lot more about Acela than I do. So that concludes my presentation.
All right, questions from the council? Mr. Dare?
I just am excited that we are continuing forward. I know that obviously COVID has pushed us into a world of pushing forward on this even more, and I would just continue to support that we do whatever necessary on our end, even if our partners are always ready to get this, and this sounds like it's another step in that. So I think it's great, and I'll make a motion whenever ready.
Okay, go ahead and make a motion.
I move to approve the software subscription service agreement AC 5716 with Permit Rocket Software LLC, DVA E-Permit Hub to provide electronic plan review software services in the Acela Regional Business License and Permit Platform in the amount of $85,516.
Okay, you got a motion by Councilman Dare, looking for a second?
Hold on a second, Abbott.
Second by Councilman Abbott. Any further discussion?
Mr. Mayor, I just want to echo what Councilman Dare said. People are asking for more of this, and I appreciate that we're moving this direction. You don't hear too many complaints about the city of Sparks, but this is one where people are wanting to see us move to electronic versions, and this is fantastic. So thank you.
Hey, any other comments from the council? And I will say that I got a call from a developer that is developing in Sparks congratulating on us on holding our Zoom meetings and how well we're doing and how seamless it is for them. So this is just another step in that direction, and I'm very proud of that. All right, if there's no more comments, I'm gonna ask all those in favor, signify by saying aye.
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 Opposed? Motion carries unanimously. Thank you very much. Thank you, Armando. And now we're going to move on. 9.7, consider, consideration and possible ratification of amendment number one to the grant program contract AC 5683 between the city of Sparks and the Reno Housing Authority to modify the terms and conditions for the provision of residential rental assistance to tenants residing within the corporate limits of the city of Sparks. Armando?
Once again, Mayor Lawson, members of the council, Armando Arnellis, Assistant Community Services Director. This is one of two agenda items that seeks council ratification of contract amendments that the city manager approved under the emergency declaration for the COVID-19 pandemic. In this case, the original agreement provided for RHA to administer a rental assistance program using $402,633 of CDBG, Community Roundwood Grant CV funds for tenants within the city of Sparks, and that's one of the programs that you received a report about earlier this afternoon from RHA Executive Director. Amy, amendment number one was initiated in response to a request from Ms. Jones to modify the terms and conditions, essentially to make it easier for RHA to be able to get these dollars out to the applicants that they had received requests from. And what amendment number one does, did, was to modify the terms and conditions specifically allowing for assistance to be provided for up to six months rather than three months per the original agreement. That was a change that Hudden made after we contracted with RHA, and so we followed suit. And then secondly, to authorize RHA to use and rely upon what was referred to as an impact and attestation statement from tenants in lieu of certain documents that would otherwise be required to demonstrate that households, households' income and assets met the eligibility requirements for the program. So again, the purpose of these changes was to facilitate the use of these dollars, and as Ms. Jones reported, all of these funds, the CDBG CV monies allocated to RHA have been spent. Because time is of the essence, on November 5th, the city manager approved amendment number one. And now, if you will please bear with me, I'm going to state for the record the reasons why the manager approved the agreement under the declared state of emergency. First, the terms and conditions of the grant contract were reviewed by staff and deemed acceptable. The grant provides services needed by the community due to the COVID-19 pandemic, and time was of the essence. The use of CARES Act funds is appropriate to pay the costs included in the grant contract. The grant contract is a necessary expenditure due to the public health emergency. The costs were not accounted for in the city's FY20 or FY21 budgets, and the costs will be incurred during the period from March 1 through December 30 of 2020. And lastly, CARES Act funds are not being used to offset a revenue shortfall caused by the COVID-19 pandemic. So that concludes my presentation, and staff is recommending that City Council ratify amendment number one to grant program contract AC 5683.
Questions from the council? Ms. Bybee?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Armando, I do have one question, one clarification. Changing it from up to three months to up to six months, that timeframe still has to be within up to December 30. It's not extending. If they receive three months, it's not going into 2021, I would assume, because that's what the CARES Act money we have right now makes that stipulation. So it's just going backwards within these eight months or whatever. That can be the six-month period ending December 30, correct?
Councilmember Bybee, that is correct.
Okay, that's, that's what I assumed, but you know what they say about assuming. So I just wanted to, just wanted to clarify. And I'm ready to make a motion if you would like, Mr. Mayor.
Go ahead.
Okay. I moved to ratify amendment number one to the grant program contract AC 5683 between the city of Sparks and the Reno Housing Authority to modify the terms and conditions for the provision of residential rental assistance to tenants residing within the corporate limits of the city of Sparks.
Okay, looking for a second?
I'll second.
Yeah, I'll take either one. So let's go with Ms. Vanderwell. I saw her move for her. Yeah, any further, the tie goes to the winner or runner or whatever that. Any further discussion, further questions? Seeing none. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries unanimously. Thank you. All right, on 9.8, consideration possible ratification of amendment number one to the professional service, services contract AC 5703 for business assistant fund administration between the city of Sparks and the National Development Council to increase the not to exceed fee amount from $45,750 to $53,750. Armando?
Thank you. Again, Armando Arnellis, Assistant Community Services Director with the second of two agenda items requesting council ratification of a city manager action. In this case, the original agreement provides for the National Development Council or NDC to assist with establishing and implementing a program that provides grants to businesses located in Sparks that were impacted by COVID-19. Originally, as you may recall, $869,000 was allocated for purposes of the actual grants, and businesses meeting the city's program eligibility criteria submitted applications for an amount exceeding more than $869,000. And when we did a presentation under the council on this, you may recall that the city manager authorized the expenditure of additional CARES Act monies as necessary to fund all of the eligible applications. So because time was of the essence, on November 20th, the city manager approved amendment number one to increase the corresponding fee amount to NDC by $8,000 to a maximum of $53,750. The amount of the fee was tied to the amount of dollars that were allocated in the former grants. Because the increased contract amount potentially exceeded the city manager's standard approval authority of $50,000, the city manager is requesting that the council ratify his improvement of amendment number one. As for the previous agenda item, I am going to state for the record the reasons why the manager approved the agreement under the declared state of emergency. So if you will bear with me, once again, those reasons were as follows. First, the terms and conditions of the contract were reviewed by staff and deemed acceptable. The contract provides services needed by the community due to the COVID-19 pandemic, and time is of the essence. Use of CARES Act funds is appropriate to pay the costs included in the contract. The contract is a necessary expenditure due to the public health emergency. The costs were not accounted for in the city's FY20 or FY21 budgets, and all of the costs will be incurred during the period from March 1 and December 30, 2020. And finally, CARES Act funds are not being used to offset a revenue shortfall caused by the COVID-19 pandemic. Staff is recommending that City Council ratify amendment number one to the professional services contract AC 5703. With that request on the table, however, I'm going to take a minute to, if I may, to report that the city is wrapping up the business assistance program. Essentially, all of the money is out the door. There was one or two that were left as of the end of last week to still fund and give you some statistics on the program. In total, the city received 77 applications over the two-week application period that ended on November 2. Ultimately, 61 of those 77 applications were approved and made it to the finish line. And by, I mean by that, there were a few that ultimately just didn't complete the process, even though they had been deemed eligible. So in total, 16 were either not eligible or did not complete the process. In total, in terms of total amount of grant funding approved, that amount is $997,440, so just under a million dollars. And the average grant amount was $16,351, with the size of grants ranging from $3,672 to $30,000. I am pleased to say that, at least in my view, NDC performed very well. I also want to emphatically thank the staff in the Financial Services Department, especially Derek Heron, who made a really concerted effort to get all of these funds into the hands of business owners and Sparks in a very condensed period of time. So that concludes my presentation, and I am available for your questions.
Questions from the council? Okay, Mr. Dare?
I just want to say thanks to our staff. I know we ramped this up, and it's not ever, and we did it in record time and working with everybody. So thank you. I think it says a lot to our citizens when we step up and work with our businesses, especially in this time. And so what an important thing, and I think it's fantastic that we got to help 61 businesses and could even help more if they would have kept walking through it. So great job. And I just said I don't have a question except just to say thank you and always brag on our staff, and this is just another moment to do some things.
Thank you.
Any other comments or questions? Mr. Anderson?
I likewise just want to thank staff for the incredible job, and Derek Heron, thank you very much for, for all your work on this. But yeah, Armando, I appreciate the update. I was going to ask where we stood. There is one business that is benefiting from this that I spoke with, and they said, quite frankly, if it wasn't for this assistance, they're not sure if they could have weathered the storm. And they do employ several people. So the fact that we were able to give them the boost to get them hopefully through this pandemic. So I just want to say thanks, and this is, this is exciting that we've been able to help our community.
Okay, any other questions, comments? Okay, I'm looking for a motion.
I'll make the motion.
Mr. Anderson?
I moved to ratify amendment number one to the professional services contract AC 5703. For the Business Assistance Fund Administration between the city of Sparks and the National Development Council. To increase the not to exceed fee amount from $45,750 to $53,750.
Okay, looking for a second?
I'll second it.
Second by Abbott. Any further discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries unanimously. Thank you very much, Armando. Happy holidays.
Thank you. Same to all of you and all the best to you in 2021.
We hope it's a better than 2020. All right, moving on, 9.9. Consideration discussion of possible approval of a two year extension of professional service contract. AC 5525 with Cardinal Infrastructure LLC. For federal lobbying and consulting service in a total amount not to exceed $130,000. Assistant City Manager Allison McCormick. Woo, big title.
Thank you, Mayor Lawson and City Council. For the record, I'm Allison McCormick, your Assistant City Manager. And I'm here today seeking the council's approval of a two year extension of the city's agreement with Cardinal Infrastructure LLC, the city's federal lobbying firm. Since 2003, the city has worked closely with a federal lobbyist and consultant, Anya Graves. In 2018, the city continued that relationship by entering into. A contract with Ms. Graves's firm Cardinal Infrastructure for its federal lobbying services. The original agreement provided for a two year term and that term expired on November 30 of this year. Cardinal has proposed extending the agreement for an additional two years under the same terms as the original agreement. If city council approves the extension, Cardinal would continue representing the city's legislative and political interests at the federal level. That includes identifying funding sources, exploring the potential for a federal lands bill. Facilitating meetings between city and federal officials and other activities. Under the prior agreement and the proposed extension, the city pays Cardinal a flat fee of $5,000 per month. Plus up to $5,000 in expenses like travel costs per year. Thus, the annual cost of the proposed extended agreement would be between $60,000 and $65,000. And the total cost for the two year term would be between $120,000 and $130,000. Staff has been pleased with the city's relationship with Cardinal Infrastructure. And therefore recommends that city council approve the proposed extension. With that, I'm happy to answer any questions.
Questions from the council? Ms. Bybee?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Actually, not a question, more of a comment. Having traveled back to Washington DC the last three years for National League of Cities. And meeting with Anya, her taking us, Councilman Dare and I on. A separate day this last time on the Hill to meet with our delegation. We were, was really so beneficial because she, her expertise, her knowledge, her connections. Are valuable to us as we're looking at navigating the. How should I put it? Very interesting environment back in Washington DC. Trying to be politically correct, but I don't think it's ever anything less than challenging, no matter who's in charge. And she just really does, does, does an amazing job. She's been great to work with. I've appreciated her. Knowledge, her expertise and gladly support this motion to extend it. I'm ready to make a motion unless you have. Other comments or do you want me to move in that opening?
We can take them under comments section. Go ahead and make a motion.
Okay, I'll go ahead and make the motion. I moved to approve the two year extension of the professional services contract AC 5525 with Cardinal Infrastructure. LLC for federal lobbying and consulting services in a total amount not to exceed $130,000.
Vanderwell, second.
Okay, got a second from Vanderwell. Any further comments? Mr. Anderson? No? Well, I want to say that I think Bennett and Anya do a great job for us back there and. I've been privy to get the, the weekly email from Bennett and basically just telling us exactly what's going on. And I certainly appreciate that. So with that, no further comments. I'll ask for all those in favor signify by saying aye.
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 Opposed? Motion carries unanimously. All right, thank you.
Thank you.
All right. 9.10. Consideration discussion of possible approval of a new five year agreement. With Axon Enterprises, Inc. For the purchase and maintenance of body worn cameras. Fleet cameras, tasers and interview rooms in the total of. Amount of $2,236,108.06. And I love that how you get the six cents in there always cracks me up. Chief Crawford, you're up.
Good afternoon, Mayor Lawson, members of the council. For the record, Chris Crawford, your chief of police. What is before you is a contract, a new five year contract for Axon. We currently have a contract for interview rooms, our body worn cameras. And our fleet system, which is our vehicles. We discovered that our, all of our tasers, with the exception of 12, will be expiring in the next few months. Which means that they will most likely lead to failures. They're very good, less than lethal. Device for us to use in our activities. So we have also been speaking with Axon for the last six months about some new technology they have. Which will improve our transparency to the community through time savings. And being able to track some other things. I'll go into those in a second. So with this, speaking with Axon, we were able to come up with the contract that is before you for a five year contract to bring everything into one contract. Of that 2.2 million, roughly 1.8 million. We will request through the county's E911 surcharge fund. For reimbursement after the city pays for that. Approximately 100,000 has already budgeted for interview rooms in our budget. And the remaining amount will be a new need that is being placed into fiscal year 22. We asked Axon to not provide us any charges for the tasers in this fiscal year. So we could budget that, which they. Gladly gave to us. A couple of the new systems that will be coming with this that are related specifically to the cameras themselves. It will speed up our redaction process by at least half. Our holsters will, as soon as they are installed, activate the cameras if an officer were to draw their weapon, which is not a technology that we currently have. And there's also another feature that I'm really excited about that will GPS the location of the officers. And I foresee that as. Us being more successful. And if God forbid something happened to one of our officers, we'll know exactly where they're at. So with that, I think that wraps up what I have for you. I'm, I'm open to any questions.
Questions from the council, Mr. Dare?
Yes, thank you, Chief Crawford. I first want to volunteer Donald, if you need any testing on those tasers to make sure that. They work or don't work. I, I think that he'd like to be there for you. So. But I, I just, I do want to say that I, I know this has all been a very interesting time and challenge, and I appreciate you stepping up and what you're doing. When it comes to all of what we're doing. Does it take us a while to end up getting those reimbursements? Or is that something that we would? We would see quite literally next year? Or is it a maybe? Or, you know, sometimes like FEMA, we don't. We always hope that we're going to get reimbursed and one day it happens. But is this one of those reimbursements? Or is this something we can pretty much count on?
This is, we've been doing it for three straight years now. So we can count on it. The average lag time is between two to four months, depending on when that meeting is, which is every two months.
Thank you. I can make a motion if you'd like.
Okay, go ahead.
I moved to approve, approve the new five year agreement 5718 with Axon Enterprises Incorporated for the purchase and associated maintenance. Of body worn cameras, fleet cameras, tasers, interview rooms and the total amount of 2,230. $2,236. And my numbers are crazy, $108.06. There you go.
Thank you. Looking for a second?
I'll second it and I have a question too.
Second by Abbott and comments?
Uh, Chief Crawford, you mentioned something about pointing out their weapon, that it would trigger something. Was it, would it trigger the camera or what was it?
That's correct. So there will be a plate put into the holster and when they, if they were to draw their weapon, it would automatically activate the camera if it was not activated.
That's pretty neat. Cool. Thank you.
Any other comments from the council? Okay, I have a motion in a second. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries unanimously. Thank you, Chief. Happy holidays.
Happy holidays.
All right, moving on. To considerate 9, 9.11. Consideration discussion of possible approval. Of an agreement AC 5719 between the city of Reno, city of Sparks. And Aqua Aerobic Systems, Inc. For rental of a pilot unit for the investigation of. Aerated granular sludge technology at Tom Whorf and the amount of 165,000 with Spark share being 51,760.50. And there is our friend Casey. Casey, tell us all about this.
Absolutely. Well, good afternoon, Mayor Lawson and members of council. For the record, my name is Casey Mensah and I am the treatment plant process engineer at the Trekkie Meadows Water Reclamation Facility. And as you mentioned, I'm here today seeking approval of an agreement between the city of Sparks, the city of Reno and Aqua Aerobic Systems, Inc. For the rental of a pilot unit to investigate aerated granular sludge technology in the amount of $165,000 with the city of Sparks share being 51,760.50. So if approved, the Aqua Aerobic Systems, Inc. Will provide us a trailer mounted pilot unit. To investigate their aerated granular sludge technology. This is under the trade name of Aqua Narada. So this Narada technology has been identified in Tom Whorf's facility plant as a really strong candidate. For implementation in the future, because it has a couple of unique benefits such as lower chemical demand, a smaller footprint. Less unit operations for the same treatment. So it's, it's this really neat newer technology that we're. That has been indicated as a, as a potentially cost effective way forward for the treatment plant. Now, given our incredibly strict discharge permits and the potential benefits from the process. We're recommending a small scale pilot study to just ensure that this alternative will enable us to continue meeting our discharge goals. Now, we're, we're currently scheduling the, the unit to be delivered in mid-January to capture the cold weather months, which is a really important consideration for any biological process such as this. Biology, when, when, when things get cold, when the weather and water temperatures get really cold, they're a lot slower to react. So this is a really. Important stress test for that particular process. We're looking at running this pilot for about six months and during that time, we'll be able to examine the impacts of the seasons on it as well as do a lot of different experiments. So one thing that we're going to do is we're really going to try our hardest to, to push the, the pilot units, to push the technology to its breaking point and see. Just how resilient it is and what that could mean for, for us and, and our treatment capabilities. I do have a picture of the pilot unit that I will show you. There it is, if you can see that. So we're expecting that onsite. What you can see poking up out of that large. Container are these two individual reactors. So there's two separate reactors that are side by side. We're really excited about this pilot unit because we can run. Different experiments in, in each of the different reactors. We could, you know, run experiments on one by watching the other to make sure that we get an appropriate understanding of the. The, the response. We can, we can run two different feeds into it. So we're just, it's just really an exciting time for us. The reactors themselves are about 25 feet tall. It's a pretty big unit and we're excited to bring it, bring it onsite and see what it can do. And with that, I'm happy to answer any and all questions.
Okay, questions from the council? Mr. Anderson?
Hey Casey, one, I want to say you always amaze me how excited you can get about sewer sludge, but always with a smile. Hey, I do have a, a question. So if, if we approve this today, we see it, you said in mid-January, how long before we're actually going to be up and running to be able to test the system?
So it takes about a week to do the initial setup. There's a lot of crane work and I think operational checks to get every, to make sure that all the, you know, all the pumps and the valves and everything all work together. And then it'll be a week after its initial, initially dropped off, will be up and running. And then it takes about three weeks to acclimate. We do, they are providing us, I mean, if you can believe it or not, they're actually providing us existing biology from one of their other larger scale. Reactors elsewhere in the United States. So we'll be seeding these reactors with, with a live. Bacteria to, you know, essentially kickstart the process. So it'll be, it'll be really just a matter of weeks before we're fully operational and ready to go.
Okay. And yeah, I was just concerned because you were talking about the, the importance of that cold weather operation. I was just wondering if this was going to be another month before we'd have it actually online. So that's good. Thank you.
Any other questions from the council? Ms. Bybee?
Hi, thank you, Casey. This meeting today has been so informative. I feel like I've been bad in school. I've got. But we've had three presentations that are, I'm learning all kinds of things that I did not know before. So I. Excited about it, excited about this incredible technology. The question I have is after the six month pilot. I know you've got a, you'll be collecting that data throughout. How soon after the six months will we be able to make a determination if it's something that we want to go with the full Aqua Narada? Not pilot, but to look at that being in addition to, to Tom Whorf.
So that, that's an excellent question. And I think that our, our thought right now as a facility is that this is sort of step one down that road. And then if we get really, you know, exciting results that might indicate this is the future for additional plant capacity. I think we'd look at doing a demonstration scale unit. And so then that would be, so it'd be, you know, somewhere between the pilot and a full scale unit. But something that would actually be long term. And then that would, I think, be an indicator of that. But. I think within a matter of, you know, a, a couple of months after the testing is all done and all the data is analyzed and compiled and final reports are together. I think we'll have a real good, clear picture on whether or not we'll be back before council, maybe seeking approval for a demonstration scale.
Okay, and that makes sense. So it's kind of a stair stepping. We don't go out because I'm sure the full, to go full capacity is a huge investment. And we'd want to make sure that, that was, was going, was going to. Would be worth the investment before we, before we did that. So thank you and thank you for all of your work. I'm excited to see, see results at the end of six months. Thank you.
All right, anyone else from the council? Questions or comments? And Casey, I love your enthusiasm also. It's always a pleasure. And these bow ties seem to be the hot thing with the city of Sparks now. Yeah, Mr. Crutts has started a fashion statement.
Well, well, you know what they say, dress for the job you want, right?
It sounds like he's coming after your job, Neil. All right, that's awesome. Okay, any further discussion on this? I'm looking for a motion to start off. Mr. Abbott?
I got it, Bob. Yeah, I moved to approve the agreement AC-5719. Between the city of Reno, city of Sparks and Aqua Aerobic Systems, Inc. For rental of a pilot system for the investigation of aerated granular sludge technology at Tom Whorf and the amount of $165,000 with Sparks' share being 51,760.50. I love it, Casey. You're, you're killing it.
All right, looking for a second?
Ten.
Second by Councilman Dare. Any further discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
And opposed? Motion carries unanimously. Casey, I think you have 9.12 also. It's consideration of possible discussion approval of a consulting agreement. AC 5720 between the city of Reno, city of Sparks, Brown and Caldwell, BNC for the Tom Whorf Reclamation Facility. Watering System Improvement Project in the amount not to exceed $584,698. With Spark share being 183,419.76. Go ahead, sir.
Well, I'd love to present this one to you. I think Michael Drinkwater is going to take point on this one, but thank you so much.
Well, there you, we're on a roll, man. Just thinking it was you. All right, Michael.
Yeah, Michael, you're muted and your camera's off. Oh.
There you go. There's half of it and there's the other half. I, I apologize. I'm technically.
there's the other half. I apologize. I'm technically impaired today. Mr. Mayor, Members of Council, Michael Drinkwater, Treatment Plan Manager, before you today, seeking approval of an agreement between City of Sparks, City of Reno, and Brown and Caldwell for the design of improvements in the Trekkie Meadows Water Reclamation Facility's dewatering building. This project intends to do, produce construction plans and specifications for the addition of a third centrifuge, a third cake pump, as well as all the ancillary facilities that are necessary to make those things operational. This work is needed. We're at the point now where our two centrifuges are leaving us with no redundancy, and we're up against, just because of flow, we're bouncing up against those upper limits of the machines, and so it's time to add that third machine. This is anticipated work. It is in the approved, the Tom Wharf FY twenty-one CIP. And as is customary, if approved, the City of Reno will manage the engineering contract with the City of Sparks paying its pro-rata share, which in this particular case is a hundred eighty-three thousand, four hundred nineteen dollars and seventy-six cents. With that, happy to answer any questions.
Questions from the council? Okay, not nearly the same enthusiasm as Casey, but it'll, I'm looking for a motion, please.
I'll make the motion.
Go ahead, Mr. Anderson.
I move to approve the consulting agreement AC five seven two zero between City of Reno, City of Sparks, Brown and Caldwell for the Trekkie Meadows Water Reclamation Facility Tom Wharf Dewatering System Improvements Project in the amount not to exceed five hundred eighty-four thousand, six hundred ninety-eight dollars, with Sparks' share being one hundred eighty-three thousand, four hundred nineteen dollars and seventy-six cents.
Okay, looking for a second?
I'll second that.
Second by Bobby. Got a motion and a second. Any further discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries unanimously. Thank you, Mr. Drinkwater. Happy holidays if we don't see you.
You, too.
All right, moving on, item ten point one, public hearing, discussion of possible approval of the Consolidated Annual Performance and Evaluation Report, or CAPR report for program year five, fiscal year twenty nineteen, twenty twenty, for the City of Sparks and for submittal to the U.S. Department of Housing and Urban Development, Mr. Rundle.
Good afternoon, Mr. Mayor. Thank you. I'm Jim Rundle, Planning Manager, Mr. Mayor, City Council as well. As you just outlined, today I will report on the CAPR, not to be confused with Mr. Kronk's Caffer that we talked about earlier. This is a report that we submit every year to HUD, so every year, staff comes in front of you as the City Council and presents on the CAPR. And this is simply a report to HUD on how the city spent CDBG and home funds that we received from them, so community development block grant funds. As I said, we represent this every year, and we are required to present this every year as a public hearing to our city council. Otherwise, we won't be able to receive the money from HUD. The money that we received and spent last year included money that we sent to the Washoe County Home Consortium. In recent years, Sparks has had numerous projects or units built in the city. I think there's three in proximity to City Hall, and more recently, the project over on Audi Boulevard were a result of Washoe County Home Consortium funds. And of course, our governing board members, Mayor Lawson, Councilwoman Byby, formerly a board member, and Councilman Abbott, review those, the Washoe County Home Consortium projects when they approve them at the Regional Planning Governing Board, which will now be the responsibility of Councilwoman Vanderwell. And of course, Councilwoman Vanderwell, you've been reviewing these projects from the other side, as you were previously a citizen on the TRC, the Technical Review Committee for the Home Consortium. Last year, the City of Sparks received six hundred ninety-one thousand dollars, and we committed fifteen percent of that to fund the Community Assistance Center, or the homeless shelter over there on East Fourth in the City of Reno. The COC is now specifically used to serve the population of men experiencing homelessness, as we've moved the women and children over to the I can't think of the new, the new name of it over there off of Galetti. Well, I'll have to get back to you on that, coming off the top of my head. Additionally, the city supplemented the CDBG funds it provided with support to the planning administrative activities for, for the City of Sparks, as well as an additional ninety thousand for housing rehabilitation. We've used eighty-five thousand of our program income to support single-family homeowner occupied deferred load programs. We've used twenty thousand for emergency repair grants. Those include roof repairs, electrical improvements, and even plumbing repairs. And the city also allocated funds to conduct pedestrian improvements in the areas of D Street and Sixteenth along the eastern side of Fifteenth Street, adjacent to Sparks High School over in Councilman Abbott's ward. These improvements include curb gutter replacements, sidewalks, accessibility ramps, and new driveway approaches, and sometimes street repairs. We also helped to fund the continuum of care. We apportioned seventeen thousand dollars to the continuum of care last year. And the continuum of care, it helps us coordinate with the homeless by transitioning them to the self-sufficiency and permanent housing. And lastly, the City of Sparks and the City of Reno jointly funded Silver State Fair Housing Council to further fair housing initiatives and efforts throughout the region. Staff request that the city council approve this report so that we can submit it to HUD and ensure that Sparks receives future CDBG funding. And Mr. Mayor, that concludes my presentation.
Okay, question from the council? All right, seeing none. This is a public hearing, so we're going to open it up to the public. Madam Clerk, do we have any public comment on this item?
If anybody would like to make public comment on item ten point one, please dial star nine from your telephone or raise your hand from your Zoom app. I'm showing none, Mr. Mayor.
Okay, we'll bring it back to the dice then, and I'm looking for a motion.
And Mr. Mayor, it's our place. That's what I was trying to think of, that we moved.
You were the one who didn't know, because the rest of us did.
Yes, I apologize.
Mr. Mayor, I'm prepared to make a motion.
Please.
I move to approve the Consolidated Annual Performance and Evaluation Report, CAPR, for program year five, fiscal year twenty nineteen through twenty twenty, for the City of Sparks for submittal to the U.S. Department of Housing and Urban Development.
Looking for a second? Anybody? Mr. I saw his hand first. Tie goes to winner.
Charlie, it's all good, but second that.
Okay, so we got a first and a second. Any further discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
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 Opposed? Motion carries unanimously. All right, thank you. Thanks, Jim. Happy holidays to you. If I don't see you.
Thank you, sir. Happy holidays to you and all of the council.
Thank you. All right, we have no planning and zoning hearings. We're on to item twelve, comments from the public. Madam Clerk, do we have any comments from the public?
If anybody would like to provide general public comment at this time, please press star nine from your telephone or raise your hand in your Zoom app. And I'm showing none, Mr. Mayor.
Okay. Twelve point two, comments from the mayor, city council, and city manager. Mr. Manager, you have any comments?
Happy holidays to everyone and their families.
All right, thank you, sir. Comments from the council? Ms. Byby?
Yeah, I just, I just wanted to wish everyone a happy holidays, happy Hanukkah, Merry Christmas, and most of all, to thank our whole team, the City of Sparks and all of us who work here are really a family. So I feel like we're all a family. We've been here for each other through some pretty difficult times. And being the, the forever optimist, I am very optimistically looking at twenty twenty-one, because it has to be better, and it will be better. And thank all of you for your hard work and look forward to kicking off next year on a very different foot than we are right now. So thank you.
Thank you. Any other comments, Mr. Dare?
Yeah, I just want to say, you know, twenty twenty has definitely obviously been a very large hill to climb, and for many, a lot of loss. But what it does do is it reminds us that what's most important, and I just encourage people and just remember what's most important, grab onto them, hold onto them, and happy holiday, Merry Christmas, these different things, but truly, look who's around you, invest well. So, and I thank all of our team here that's on here, but also our staff. It's been, it's been wonderful, and it's been quite a year. Been a lot of loss, obviously, missing our late mayor Ron Smith. What a, what an incredible year, what an incredible man he was. Ed, thank you, our mayor, for stepping up, and you've done a great job in these months, and I look forward to the years to come. Many, many blessings. Thank you.
Thank you. Ms. Vanderwell?
Yes, I would, first of all, I'd like to say thank you to all my fellow city council people. Today, it's been a hundred and twenty days, so I've stuck in it. So, and I'm so looking forward to next year and all of us working together. And I do want to extend, not only to the leadership of Sparks, but also all of the employees. I cannot thank everyone enough for all of your assistance and help in transitioning me, and I look forward to a long working relationship with everyone, and happy holidays to everyone.
Thank you. And they said it wouldn't last, Diane. Very good. Anyone else? All right, from the mayor, and I just got to say, it's been an absolute pleasure to be the mayor, and I'm telling you, it's, it's more, I get to work closer with the employees now than I ever have, and it really makes me appreciate the hard work and all the things that they do for us and the selfless sacrifice for the city and our citizens. And I think we all get it, you know, we're a service industry. That's all we do. We don't make anything. We do nothing but service our citizens, and I think we do a good job of that in the City of Sparks. So I want to wish everybody a happy holidays and a way better twenty twenty-one New Year. And with that, with to channel our former mayor Ron Smith, without objection, we are adjourned. Thank you, guys.
Don't go anywhere. So with that, I would like to call to order the Sparks Redevelopment Agency Meeting of Monday, December fourteenth, with the roll call, Madam Clerk.
Chairperson, by the way.
Here.
Agency members, cover it.
Here, sorry.
Vanderwell.
Here.
Anderson.
Here.
Lawson.
Here.
There.
Here.
I think Chief Legal Officer Duncan.
Here.
Chief Administrative Officer Krutz.
Here.
We have a forum. Thank you.
Thank you, Madam Clerk. We'll go to item three, public comment.
And if anybody would like to make public comment at this time, please press star nine from your telephone or use the raise your hand function from your Zoom app. And I'm showing none, Madam Chair.
Thank you, Madam Clerk. I'll go on to item four point one, approval of the agenda. Do I have a motion to approve?
Prove.
Okay, was it Agency Member Dare or Anderson? You were both kind of moving. Agency Member Dare, I hear first, Agency Member Vanderwell, second. Any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
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 Motion carries unanimously. Item five point one, minutes, consideration, discussion, and possible approval of the minutes of the Sparks Redevelopment Agency Meeting of November twenty-third, twenty twenty. Do I have any corrections, additions, or a motion to approve?
Move to approve?
I have a motion by Agency Member Anderson. Do I have a second? I have a second by Agency Member Vanderwell. Any discussion? All those in favor say aye.
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 Opposed? Motion carries unanimously. Item six point one, business items. Consideration and possible acceptance of the report of the claims and bills approved for payment and appropriation transfers for the period of November fifth, twenty twenty through November eighteenth, twenty twenty. Do I have a motion to approve? Agency Member Dare, motion to approve. Do I hear a second?
Second.
Second, Abby.
I have a second by Vanderwell. Beat you to it, Donald, sorry. I have a motion and a second. Any discussion? All those in favor say aye. Opposed? Motion carries unanimously. Item seven point one, comments from the public. Madam Clerk, do we have any comments from the public?
And if there is anybody wishing to make public comment at this time, please press star nine from your telephone or raise your hand via your Zoom app. I'm showing none, Madam Chair.
Thank you, Madam Clerk. Item seven point two, comments from the agency and chief administrative officer. Do I have any comments? Okay, seeing none. We are adjourned. Happy holidays, and thank you all.
Happy holidays.
Thank you, guys.
Thank you, guys.